Good morning. I'd like to call this work session of the Southampton Town Board to order on this 21st day of June 2018. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please be seated. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Supervisor Steiderman?
Here.
Councilwoman Lopstad?
Here.
Councilwoman Glara? Is that with us? Councilwoman Bubea?
Here.
Councilwoman Kivon?
Here.
Yes, and Councilwoman Glara has an excused absence from today's meeting. All right, so we are gonna start with a presentation of the draft 2017 Annual Financial Report, which was performed by Noraki Smith. That is the company that we hired to do this. I'm gonna ask our control, Len Marchese, to come forward to the table. And Len will be joined by David Tellier, CPA and partner with Noraki Smith, and Philip Marciano, CPA and manager with Noraki Smith, to take us through the report. Len, you gonna kick this off?
Sure.
Okay.
As you know, the town received -- is required by a lot of different rules and regulations to have an annual audit. And we hire an independent CPA firm to perform that audit annually. And this is a result of their audit, which kinda -- they review all the work that we do, the Controller's Office, the financial systems of the town. They kinda confirm that our controls are in place, et cetera. And as a result of that, they issue an annual report. And that's what you have here. Basically, I sent around this draft to the board several weeks ago for your review. Although it's a big document, that's why I gave it to you well in advance. After we present the audited financials, there's like an official act where you accept them, which we need to do because we wanna file them with the Government Finance Officers Association so we can receive the certificate of accounting and financial achievement. So, we've been receiving that ever since I've been here, so I'd like to continue that. And so there's a deadline that's due by the end of July. I think we have to submit it. And what that does, just see a little bit of an overview on that. There's basic financial statements with required disclosures, et cetera. And that's one level. That's really the minimum that you're required to do. But in order to achieve this award, you have to go above and beyond in terms of disclosure, tables, demographics, a lot of different information that we provide the reader to be more informed about the town government and its finances. We meet that standard, and we have been. And we've been presenting it in that format for a number of years now. So, it's a good thing to have, and you know, you actually, you get an award for it, and it's something that not many municipalities have. So, we have to be very proud that we do have that achievement here. And with that, I can leave it up to Dave. Dave's a partner at Noraki Smith, and he's handled our engagement.
Great, thank you very much. Both Phil and I have been on, you know, been on the engagement this year. Again, Dave Tellier, I'm the partner, so I had overall kinda oversight of the engagement. Phil Marciano's the manager. He had the day-to-day oversight of our staff conducting the audit with management. We kinda put together a brief presentation. Like Len mentioned, this is a very large document, so I'm not gonna walk you page by page. I don't wanna take up too much of your time. But we highlighted some big things here for you, just relating to the audit and some of the numbers that's contained in it. But we'd be happy to obviously answer any questions along the way. So, first, like Len mentioned, we're proud to say that the prior year's report, 2016, received the Certificate for Excellence in Financial Reporting, which was awarded to the town by the Government Finance Officers Association. As Len mentioned before, that's the goal, to continue that going forward. We feel that this report, as it's being presented to you, will meet that requirement, and you should receive that certificate. Going through, the first thing is our scope of services. So, Noraki Smith was contracted by the town to perform the audit of the general purpose financial statements for the year ended December 31st, 2017. Also, within here is your -- we've attached not only to the main report, but we also had our management letter, which has a -- I'm sorry. And we have other copies if anybody else needs it.
Printing that out would --
Yeah, it's a lot, so. We had our -- we issued our management letter, which talks about findings and improving internal controls. And then we also performed the single audit of the federal award programs administered by the town. The big one is obviously the Section 8 program. Before we get into the numbers, I maybe I'll turn it over to Phil, just to talk a little bit just about the audit conduct itself.
You're missing a section.
Are you missing?
I'm missing a summary, I think. You're missing the piece you got in your --
This one?
If you need it.
No, no.
Yeah, as Dave was talking about, the audit readiness and responsiveness. Each year we do this audit. The town's Controller's Office is ready to go. The books are closed and prepared for us. We started our audit March 5th. We concluded about a month later. We only had one small adjustment for reclassification. But there was nothing that we made adjustments to that would affect any of your reporting as it was presented to you prior to our audit. So, you know, for a municipality of this size to have books and records that are closed and clean and accurate, believe it or not, is an accomplishment in itself. So, I thank, you know, Len and his team, and Dorothy Gaudlewski for all of her help. And all the town departments were always ready, ready to answer any of our questions. So, as far as audit readinesses go and cooperation, perfect.
And we did, so before we got to this point to meet with you, we did meet with the town's Audit Advisory Committee, and we presented the financial statements in a little bit more detail, where we kinda sat them through and spent a good amount of time with them, walking them through the financial statements. That occurred on May 31st, and that was actually a very good meeting. We appreciate the committee's time in that regards as well. So, to go through the report just a little bit, we've highlighted some things for you. The first is our auditor's report within the financial statements. It's a clean or unmodified opinion, which is obviously what you look for. It means that the financial statements are free of material misstatement, that the audit was conducted in accordance with U.S. generally accepted auditing standards, and that the financial statements are presented in accordance with U.S. generally accepted accounting principles. As you know, with the financial statements, there's actually kinda two sets of financial statements within them. So, there's the one set, which we call the government-wide financial statements. Those are on the full accrual basis, so that's more like a for-profit company. So, your fixed assets, your long-term debt, everything is kinda culminated within those reports. So, to give you a little bit of, a little bit regarding that, your statement of net position or your balance sheet. The town had total assets and deferred outflows totaling $1.3 billion.
Stop right there.
Yep.
Because that's an extraordinary number.
It is.
I don't know, never heard of, maybe even a city that has that much that it owns. $1.3 billion. So, that's, I imagine largely community preservation fund land is probably $600 million or more of that.
Probably right around there, yeah.
Rest are properties like Town Hall and some of the other buildings and equipment that we own.
Yeah, you also have, besides the land, you also have the development and access rights, which total about $300 million. So, you're looking at about $900 million just sitting in, you know, land and development rights.
Right. But those are, we're counting it as full value assets when you can't really sell it without an act of the state legislature to alienate.
Correct, yeah.
So, it has some value, some potential value if you ever were in a fiscal bind, but nobody would ever consider, I don't think, selling any of those things.
Right, yeah, correct. And those are, yeah. And a lot of that --
You know, this is your roads.
Your roads and --
You're always gonna buy your road either, but it is part of your assets.
Right. So, it's, yeah, it's true that we own all this land.
Right.
And you're valuing it what we paid for it, but the act of putting it into park status devalues that land. So, it's a bit of, it's a good bragging point. We own a, you know, billion dollars' worth of assets. But the true value is probably not a billion, but understood.
Greater intangible benefit.
Right. The accounting value for it is, when it was recorded a cost, as you're saying, is correct. And that's the reason that government financial statements have two bases of accounting, there's two statements. Because if you were to look at the government-wide statement only, you know, you would think you were billionaires. But the fact of the matter is, the governmental fund financials, where your transactions actually occur, is what the town actually has and can use and, you know, can transact on.
Okay. But it is, it's an impressive number.
Absolutely, definitely.
For a municipality. Have you ever heard of a municipality with over a billion dollars in assets?
We don't deal with any.
Not, no, not that we deal with, none that we can --
Len is --
I honestly think --
City in New York.
Yeah, besides that, but I mean, if you're looking at the town level --
Larger entities are encumbered by a lot of different things.
Right.
Does that figure in due to the fact that that land is taken off of the tax rolls? The land that we own, we don't --
Some is, some isn't.
Yeah, yeah.
There are pilot programs.
There are some, yeah, exactly.
Okay.
So, staying on the full accrual statements, you have total liabilities and deferred inflows of $271 million. That relates to your, not only your current liabilities, but also your bonds, your longstanding other post-employment benefit numbers, things of that nature. Again --
A lot of that's pension liability, right?
Correct, yep. And then that leaves you with a net position or almost a retained earnings of $1 billion.
Okay. But again -- That pension liability, unlike a lot of other municipalities, we haven't amortized any of that. That's all out of operating.
Correct, it's pay-as-you-go, as of right now, correct.
That's an important distinction. Because for many, many entities, they are paying that liability through borrowing and compounding the numbers.
Yeah.
Or not.
No.
Okay.
The number seen here is an actuarially derived number. That is in the case of you how to pay it the next day, that's what it would be, you know, determined by them. But as far as your bills are concerned, you are fully up to date and paid.
Okay.
And pay current.
So, our net position is $1 billion positive?
Yes, positive.
It's pretty good. Not bad.
No. And on a full accrual basis, your income statement, or what's deemed your statement of activities, for the year you had a positive change or net income of $35 million. You had revenues increased $1.6 million from the previous year, or 1%, and your expenses increased a little over $4 million, or 3.3% over the previous year. Again, these are full accrual numbers. So, this takes into account depreciation charges, it backs out your capital asset purchases, because it now books them as assets, certain things like that. As far as your debt payments, they're not expenses, it's a reduction of a liability. So, it's just a different way of accounting. So, the next layer of financial statements is what's called the governmental fund financial statements.
Is that though the last thing on the statement of activities?
Yeah.
The fact that the revenues did not increase dollar-wise as much as the expenses did? That's though accounted for in, in what way? By the application of surplus? Which then wasn't accounted for at this time, the growth in surplus?
Well, again, this kind, those numbers fluctuate, again, because of the way in which you translate the governmental funds to the full accrual funds. So, when you're, when you're doing that translate, you, we have, we're backing out capital asset purchases or community preservation purchases. So, those expenses on your governmental side funds are now backed out of the expenses.
I see.
And the revenue is also, one of the bigger swings in this is obviously the CPF fund.
I see, so you're, that's reflected in this.
Where the revenue is reflected, but the expenses are not. So, that's why it's, we try not to highlight too much here, because there's so many different moving parts that, that could swing those numbers one way or another.
I don't wanna give anybody the false impression that our budget isn't balanced.
No, that's --
Because the reality is that we, we added to our fund balance.
Correct, you did. And that's why I was trying to put that caveat, that this is the full accrual.
I think you gotta go through the whole thing.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I like to ask as we --
No, no, no.
No, no, I think it answers the question a little bit further.
Okay, no, that's fine. All right, so you wanna move on to seven?
Okay, so, yeah, so point seven is the governmental fund financial statements. These are the traditional financial statements. So, these are on the fund level, which is managed on a day-to-day basis by the, by the business office. It's, it's on the current focus. So, on these statements, you don't have long-term, there's no long-term picture. There are no long-term assets, the capital assets. There are no debt compensated absence. Only things that will be paid for or received within the upcoming year are recognized within these fund, fund-level statements. So, in total, on your balance sheet, for all of your funds, which there are many, the total asset sits at a total of $157 million. So, again, these are all, this is current, as Phil was explaining before. This is what is, will be utilized for the town going forward.
So, that's all we collect in taxes plus whatever we have in reserves, basically, is reflected there?
Yeah, for total assets, it's all your cash that you expect to use in the coming year, including restricted cash that's offset by your restricted reserve fund balance.
Okay.
These are operating numbers.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what's available.
Exactly.
So, the CPF tax revenues?
That's in there.
That's in there. That's in it, yeah. So, this is the, so like for, for instance, community preservation, there's, of the $157 million, $75 million relates specifically to the community preservation fund, the CPF fund.
And that's reflected on it, all right.
Correct. You have total liabilities on the fund level, in total, of $26.6 million. This is mainly --
CPF?
Yes, or Capital Projects Fund. A lot of that is within the Capital Projects Fund, monies that's owed out for projects that bridge one year over to the next year, and things of that nature. And your bond anticipation notes that will be redeemed, which leaves you with a total fund balance of a little over $130 million. This is broken down into five different categories for fund balance on a fund level. You have $4.1 million, which is deemed to be non-spendable fund balance, because that's items that were prepaid in 2017 that relate to '18. So, we haven't used that yet. It'll be an expense going forward. You have $96.8 million, which is restricted fund balance. Of that, eighty, about $86.5 million is directly related to the CPF fund and Capital Projects Fund. You have $760,000 that is committed fund balance, which will be, it's committed for a specific purpose going forward. You have $13.6 million, which is assigned fund balance. Of that, that's primarily the fund balance that's left over for the specific funds that have to be, those monies have to be utilized within those funds. It can't be just used for general purposes. And then you have $15 million of unassigned funds, which that sits in the general fund that could be used, that's almost unrestricted monies that can be utilized and spent in the way in which the town deems it necessary. On the fund level, income statement, you had a total increase in fund balance of $5.2 million.
That's huge.
Yeah, within your general fund, your general operating fund, you had an increase in fund balance of about $2.2 million. So, that is, that's very --
That's significant.
Yes. You had total revenues of all the funds of $162, $165.2 million, up from last year's $162.6, so about $2.5 million increase. Again, of that, a little over $71 million relates to property taxes, and $56 million relates to the CPF fund, the 2% transfer tax.
Okay.
And you have total expenditures of $167.2 million, which is down from the previous year of $185.6. That, that big decrease was primarily related to less community preservation purchases from 2016 to '17.
Yeah, not necessarily less in number, but less in dollars.
Just less in dollars, exactly, yes.
Because out here, one property could be $20 million.
Yes. So, that's just a quick overview of the financial statements. Again, the notes to the, to the financial statements, which go on for about 30 some odd pages, there were no, there were no new Gatsby pronouncements as in this year, so they were pretty much identical with the prior year report, as far as the presentation and what was put together. As Len mentioned, because we are, we did put together the CAFRA report, which is a much larger report, it does give a lot of information to the reader. So, there's a lot of other, what we call other supplementary information, which really relates to a lot of budgetary information for the reader at a, at a much deeper level, as well as a lot of statistical information and demographics and things that run. Gives a good picture of what the town is doing, not only the current year, but over the last 10 years.
Any, sorry, any red flags in your recommendations or findings?
No, there were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in our review of the internal controls and in our, in our audit work. We're very happy to say that. We did have just, we had three current year recommendations, two of which related to the Justice Court, which didn't relate to the town itself. Just talking about bank reconciliations, evidence and review of approval of those reconciliations.
Len, is that something you're working on with Justice Court?
As best we can. There are some issues that are inherent in the, in the size of our Justice Court and the way we have it with four independent judges and how the money has to be transmitted to the state. The state has very strict guidelines on when the money needs to be transmitted to the state, and they don't give you much time after the end of the month. So, one of our deficiencies is the reports have to be to the state within 10 business days, 10 days after the close of the month.
Okay.
The way our judges work, sometimes they're not scheduled to come in until after the 10th day. So, that automatically puts them in --
Noncompliance.
Yeah, noncompliance. So, we wind up, structurally, it's hard for us to meet that, just the way we're organized. So, but it does get there, it's just a little late. So, it's down to time.
Yeah, nothing was --
It gets there on the 12th day, but --
And that's from last year's recommendation that you note that was not implemented.
Correct.
Yeah, I can't really implement it unless you folks determine that you're gonna change the schedule of the justices. And I don't think that that's gonna happen.
They work on the rotating four of them.
Yeah, right. So, there's something, so anything that we can do, like the Bank Recs will do that, will review that, anything that can do, we will.
Yeah.
The time of deposits should be --
We have less recommendations this year than we had last year.
Correct, yes.
So, we addressed most of last year's recommendations, it looks like.
Yeah, yeah, that's the idea.
Yeah, of the six, a bunch of them being worked on, a couple got cleared. And it was just the monthly reporting that there was no, for the Justice Court, that there was no movement on that we saw. But again, because of how Matt explained it, it's kinda hard. You know, we're required to cite it because it is technically noncompliance, but we understand and it's, unfortunately, it's probably gonna happen.
What about, I see, you guys audited the trustees, too?
Correct, we did audit the trustees.
And in terms of that report, recommendations?
We had no, no recommendations for the trustees. The operations of the trustees, as you all probably know, is handled by the Controller's Office, or the controls within the Controller's Office.
They used to have a lot of recommendations, that they were on their own.
What about --
Now, their recommendations flow with our procedures, so it's not, if our accounting is intact, their accounting is intact.
Wasn't the recommendation maybe last year regarding the tax receivers office?
Yes.
Those are in there.
Was that addressed?
They're in the prior year status section.
Bank reconciliations relating to the tax receiver, that was in process.
That's all taken care of?
Yeah.
They're being worked on.
The review of the collateral was being worked on as well. And the segregation duties, we felt that it wasn't relevant anymore, because we determined that there was, there is oversight over what the receiver is doing.
Okay, good.
So, we got rid of that, so. And then they're looking into different software packages for the receiver's taxes as well. So, there was a lot of movement in that area.
So, on the whole, it sounds like the report's very favorable, very positive?
It is, it's a very positive report. I think it puts the town in a very positive light.
As you know, we just had our AAA credit rating --
Yes.
Reaffirmed by Standard and Poor's. With a, one of the, I, the strongest report I've ever seen, actually, in my term in office. It was, they referred to pretty much town management, town finances, it's very strong. Not just strong, very, very strong. Our procedures all across the board is, you know, from the report, if there was a rating higher than AAA, we would've gotten it. Because we exceeded, we hit every one of their, you know, their considerations and exceeded them, so.
Right.
It was very good.
Which is great.
Any, any cautionary notes, anything we need to be mindful of that you can see?
No.
Okay.
No, nothing that, you know, nothing that has come up in our eyes that we could see as being problematic in the future.
Any additional internal controls?
Yeah, everything that we reviewed, we were very happy with the way everything's being conducted. It's got really good segregation duties in all areas. I mean, and like Phil said, it, obviously, everything starts with the finance, but then we bridge out to other departments and other areas, and we look at, you know, we look at a lot of stuff. And we meet a lot of people and have a lot of discussions, and it's not, for us, it's, everything is very orderly and put intact and very thought out, not only in the finance area, but in, pretty much throughout the town, so it's --
Well, we, in municipal government, we don't often get accolades. At this point, I'd like to recognize some of the people, certainly Len Marchese, Dorada in the back, Russell, who's been very involved in human resources and also our finances. To the three of you, your entire staff, I'd like to congratulate you. It's as good as it gets, so. Don't ask for more money, though.
I'm handing in my resignation.
I think it's telling, you know, when I come to your office and ask for money and you don't go, "Sure, how much?" You get right down. I appreciate your effort.
So, you, well, procedurally, there'll be a resolution, I think, on the next meeting to either accept this as well. And I, just on a, on a related note, we interviewed another CPA firm to perform some LoSAP audits yesterday, and I'm gonna put forth a resolution in the next meeting as well, to hire them to do the LoSAP audit for one of our ambulance companies to do a detailed review of their procedures.
Okay, good. What's the timeline on that?
Well, once you are awarded, I'm hoping that we can have a contract to them by August 1st, by the process, and they think they need about four to six weeks.
Okay.
Okay, good. I also, when you get a chance, if you could set up, we had done one internal LoSAP, and I wanted to have a sit-down with that agency and kind of go over our findings, so.
Okay, so you want me to set up a meeting with them?
Yes.
Sure. Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, a little ahead of schedule. So, sure, why don't we try to do a few updates?
Can we review the draft?
We could review the draft's agenda, too, that would get Sunday --
Let us get to work.
Let me, let me do one update. The US Open, it's now behind us. You know, I have, first, there's so many people to thank, you know, the USGA was tremendous to work with. Hank Thompson and Charlie Howe, they were, they were consummate professionals throughout. They kept me in the loop, which was great. You know, they addressed every concern that we brought to their attention. The event went really smoothly. I know they were really pleased with how it went. The weather cooperated. Apparently, I guess it was tougher than most courses. I think the winner basically made par. Something like that. I have to, you know, publicly thank Chief Skrenicki, who did an extraordinary job as the lead agency in terms of public safety, and Captain Shurk, who was the incident commander. They were managing 31 agencies for this event. And, you know, you could say, well, maybe, you know, they did too much, or whatever. The fact is, you know, we didn't, you know, in this time of, you know, terrorism and all the kinds of things that you have to think about, they prepared, they thought through every possible thing that could go wrong. They took decisive action to prevent these things, you know, whether it was barricades or video cameras, everything that they could think of. And the fact that none of those things happened, you know, maybe having all those systems in place acted as a discouragement. The traffic, always an issue. It was an issue with or without the US Open. Anyone who drove it here today knows that. This is the run-up to July 4th. There's a lot of trade parade traffic. The US Open definitely adds to the traffic. I won't say it doesn't. On Monday and Tuesday during the practice rounds, there was significant backlogs heading west that people got stuck in. I apologize for that. We made significant changes to the system to avoid that in the rest of the days. In fact, one of the things that happened on Monday, which wasn't part of the original traffic plan, they were coning off a lane to allow the buses out, merging two lanes of westbound County Road 39 traffic into one. That wasn't part of the plan. Police were supposed to escort those buses out. That was immediately changed, as was the timing on the shrubland roadlight. So by Wednesday, things were getting better. Even though volume was increasing, the travel times were decreasing across the board. By Thursday, the tournament began. Again, we were getting people to and from the tournament in very reasonable times. Shuttle buses leaving Kobreski were arriving sometimes less than a half an hour. In fact, I was just talking to one vendor, talking about Saturday and Sunday, and they said people were getting out faster than normal. Faster than normal. Some other people have told me that too, that their travel times, they did better during the US Open than normally. That, now, we did do a lot of things to improve traffic. So I'll just give you some examples. So they put the Canoe Place Road on Montauk Highway in the morning on blink. St. Andrews Road was put on blink. Watermill Light remained on blink in the mornings. The, the timing was adjusted at the David White's Light to maximize east-west travel. All of the lights in the village, they were, the timing was adjusted along Hampton Road to make it so that the east-west flow, once cars were moving, they could continue moving. We had state troopers along 24 to assist in backlogs on 24 heading toward the tournament. The police did everything they could, working with all the law enforcement agencies, to address whatever traffic flow issues were out there. And I think they did an extraordinary job. So on the whole, I think this event was, you know, we'll eventually have the sales tax receipts, we'll be able to see what it did for the local economy. Anecdotally, many people have reported to me very positive things, not everyone, but for the most part. From, from the barber shops to the delis, to the restaurants, to lots of other vendors, people who sold materials to the USGA, there were, there was significant increase in some cases in business activity.
I think, I haven't seen what the totals were, but I'd heard that somewhere around 25,000 additional visitors per day.
More, so more than that. One day, there was 31,000 spectators on the course.
That doesn't include the employees.
Plus the employees and plus our security and everyone else. That is a lot of people to manage.
It is.
And, look, they're coming back in 2026, it's only eight years away. There'll be more houses built in Southampton in intermediary years, interim years. I have to say, you want, there were a lot of lessons, I think, that we learned, and I talked to the county executive about trying to bring people together to talk about what worked and what didn't work and what could be done differently next time. I have to say, the MTA, Long Island Railroad, really helped. Those trains were packed, so packed that in some cases, people couldn't get onto them. Long Island Railroad, I don't know how they did this, but they added additional trains. They already had six trains scheduled for some of those early days and then more for the later days, but they were able to squeeze in more trains than that they had scheduled. There were 1,500 people per train, that's a lot of people to carry.
And they were bringing them from the east as well.
Yep. And then they were getting off. And they were then, you know, able to go over the pedestrian bridge and get onto the course. And, you know, and the large parking lots were helpful and the shuttle buses, all that seemed to work out well. This is an extraordinarily large event. You know, they built, it's like building a city there. Over 300 tents were constructed at Schenectady Hills. It's hard to fathom putting the pieces together for an event this size. But I have to say, for all the things that could go wrong, I have to say that this was a successful event. You know, with the exception of some, you know, frustrating traffic on Monday and Tuesday, you know, when you think of what, all the things that could have happened that didn't, I would have to say it was quite a success.
Well, if you put it in context to the population, so we have a year-round population, roughly 60,000 here, which triples, almost quadruples in the summer. So you have an additional 31,000 visitors just to the event itself, not to mention all the ancillary press and all the rest of the things we discussed. So if you put that in context, it's, I think it was successful.
Yes. Also, there's a, it was a contribution we're receiving to reimburse the town for security, 625,000, which will go a very long way to making us whole in terms of our expenses. And I believe there's a donation that is being made to the Schenecty Nation from the USGA as well. A sort of golfing facility or golf education center that they're going to be making as a gift to the nation, which is, I'm pleased to hear. So, you know, I think on the whole, everything worked out well.
It was a good event. You know, I got the opportunity to tour the joint operations center. And I want to appreciate Chief Skrenicki and Captain Shurk. It really was an impressive operation. All of the agencies, the security agencies, were housed in headquarters on the Stony Brook Southampton campus, and it was extensive. And so, you know, I also watched the police. And on the 18th hall, when it was coming down to the wire, our police were watching the crowd.
Yeah.
And I was watching them, and they did that through the tournament. Very professional, very helpful, and so.
They were even, like on those hot days, screening for, you know, signs of heat stroke, heat exhaustion, making sure people were hydrated. They were so helpful throughout this event.
And in the end, it was fairly uneventful, except for the tournament, the traffic and Phil Mickelson.
Right. Tiger Woods, people were hoping Tiger Woods would make the cut. So that was the conversation, you know, and I'm glad that that was the conversation. People, the spectators were really happy. And I have to say, I hope I'm not the only one who felt this, but there seemed to be an electricity in the air around Southampton, a buzz of excitement, that, you know, we were proud to be hosting the US Open.
The eyes of the world.
This was a community event. And I think the town of Southampton, we shined through this event. And the USGA too, this tournament, you know, went very smoothly, very professionally managed them.
All right.
So again, you know, every department practically in this town was involved in this event. From the Comptroller's Office, who we just saw, to the IT Department, to Parks Department, Municipal Works, Highway Department.
Town Clerk's Office.
Town Clerk's Office. You know.
For a year and a half.
Yes, Sunday.
We all spent a tremendous amount of time on this event. And I think the success of the event needs to be shared with all those people. So thank you, on behalf of the town, to all of the departments, all the employees, the department heads for assisting, including you, Jim, I know you had a lot to do with this too, the town attorney's office, across the board. Russell, every department was involved in this. So thank you to everybody.
Fire marshals, code enforcement.
Fire marshals, yeah, code enforcement.
They were there the whole time.
Even the Bay Constables, you know, they were out patrolling the waters and, you know, making sure everything was smooth. So it was a group effort, a team effort, and it was successful. Okay, we have a few more minutes. You want to try to get through the draft agenda?
Sure.
We're going to do the opioid recommendation, opioid task force recommendations right at 11:00. I know some of you are here for that. Is anybody here for any other item? Okay, you guys, is there a particular thing that you guys are here for?
Opioid recommendations.
Opioid recommendations and.
I mean, express hag or express.
Okay. Okay. Okay, press too. So what we, what we like to do, since we have an upcoming meeting, is to kind of go through the agenda, make sure nobody has any questions, or if anybody has a question, we get it resolved. This is for June 26th, so this will be here at Town Hall, 6:00 PM. It's an evening meeting next Tuesday. We'll have several public hearings, three in number. First one would be amending the Town Code Chapter 312 to exclude trucks over 10,000 pounds from using River Avenue in Eastport. Number two is a public hearing to consider amending Town Code Chapter 312-12 to authorize removal of stop signs on Scuttle Hole Road at the intersection of Millstone Road. That's that stop sign, right when you get, when you just get out of the roundabout as you're heading towards Sag Harbor and you immediately have to come to a stop. And then it backs up into the roundabout, the roundabout ceases to function the way it was designed, and we have recommendations from our engineering firm and our police department to remove that stop sign in both directions and allow Scuttle Hole to flow. And the third public hearing is to consider amending Town Code Chapter 312-72, vehicles and traffic to prohibit left turns from Millstone Road onto Scuttle Hole Road. That is related to the removing of the stop sign. So you'll hear full description of why that would need to be done at the public hearing. All right, resolutions, 29689 authorizes a supervisor to sign a contract extension with Michael Berluschi, BBA JB Property Management as primary vendor and Quintal Contracting Corporation as secondary vendor for property cleanup to bring properties back into compliance. Tell me, John, would you read the next?
Sure. Town Board Resolution 29686 authorize a purchase of special paving markings from Suffolk County contract with Fenceman Incorporated.
29693 authorize a supervisor to sign contract with Curvature Inc., SMS, formerly known as SMS Systems Maintenance Services Inc. for hardware maintenance for Town Police Department. 26694 authorizes supervisor to execute an 2018 annual software support and maintenance agreement with HLP Inc. for chameleon software products for the animal shelter.
Town Board Resolution 29683 to authorize a supervisor to execute an agreement to renew the town's maintenance agreement with Granitius FKA Accelerator for Minitrack and Minitrack NE Boardroom.
Town Board Resolution 29690 would authorize a supervisor to sign a contract with Robert H. Fox, DBA Sea Level Mapping for a hydrographic survey of Honey Pot Pond in Southampton.
Oh, good, that's moving along.
Moving along, yeah.
Okay, that's important. 26, I'm sorry, 29687 awards and authorize supervisor to sign contract for gear fence materials with Trident Enterprises International Inc. 29634 accepts a 17 audited financial statement from Nirocky Smith for the town of Southampton to authorize Town Clerk to publish notice of the 2017 financial report. I just heard about that in work session.
If we could just correct one thing, I think it says the Town Board in the third resolve, the Town Board directs the Town Clerk to file a copy of the audited statements in my office, which I would imagine that should be, Nirocky Smith should be filing the copy or the Town Comptroller. Because I don't have habit to file, you know what I mean? Somebody else should be filing it with me, not me filing it with me.
Maybe we just say, change Town Clerk to Town Comptroller?
Town Comptroller, okay. Thank you.
Let's just double check.
No, but he wouldn't publish in the.
He wouldn't.
Unless they provide him with it to file.
To file with you.
Or if they're.
Which resolve are you looking at?
Third one.
The third one was his resolve that the Town Board directs the Town Clerk to file a copy of the audited financial statements in the Town Clerk's office.
The Town Comptroller.
So the Town Comptroller to file? Yeah, why don't we, why don't we just change that one?
Okay.
You got that?
Yeah, that's just a scrupulous error.
Yeah.
Yes, I'll correct. Thank you.
All right. So I think I'm on 29635 accepts December 31st 17 CPF audit from Cullen and Danowski, Danowski, I'm sorry, LLP for the town of Southampton, authorize Town Clerk to publish notice for the Community Preservation Fund financial statements for an independent auditors report. 29568 accepts payment and amends the 18 adopted budget for police overtime. 29632 amends the 18 adopted budget for building and zoning division overtime. 29658 amends 18 adopted budget for general services. 29659 amends the 18 adopted budget for youth bureau. 29629 amends the 18 adopted budget for CTV. 29671 authorize a supervisor to sign statement of annual financial and operating information to file with the Securities and Exchange Commission.
2969, I'm sorry, 29672 to accept the resignation of Patricia Fallon from the Community Preservation Advisory Board. Town Board Resolution ID 29673 is to appoint Craig Catalonoto to the Community Preservation Fund Advisory Board.
That's great. 29664 accepts, I'm sorry, appoint Steven Troye, Chairperson of the Town's Workplace Violence Prevention Committee. 29608 retain Steven O'Brien of O'Brien &amp; O'Brien, LLP in the matter of Thomas J. Salvatore versus Deborah Renee Breakwhite and Gary J. Weber.
Town Board Resolution ID 29642 to adopt secret negative declaration to amend Town Code Chapter 330-10 Table of Use Regulations listing pre-existing marinas and boatyards as a permissible use in residential districts and to designate the expansion and renovation of pre-existing marinas and boatyards in residential districts as a special exemption use. Town Board Resolution ID 29640, resolution of adoption to amend Town Code 330-10 Table of Use Regulations listing pre-existing marinas and boatyards as a permitted use in residential districts and to designate the expansion and renovation of pre-existing marinas and boatyards in residential districts as a special exemption use.
29425 is the 2018 cost waiver for the Wounded Warrior Project Soldier Ride the Hamptons. 29641 authorize CPF tax refund pursuant to the first-time homebuyer exemption for Justana 29667 release maintenance bond in connection with the site plan application of AD East Montauk Highway Hampton Base. 29636 is the 2018 part-time salaries amendments or changes. 29662 accepts the resignation of Raymond Swanson, so laborer. 29617 accepts retirement of Wayne Tuttle, heavy equipment operator in highway. 29675 allocates LISC grant funding for additional compensation. 29674 appoints Brian Lester Esquire, Special Counsel for disciplinary hearings. 29666 appoints Robert DiAndrea to waterways maintenance mechanic two, physician and trustees. 29579 appoint Sage Renee Sutton to audio-visual aid position.
Town Board Resolution ID 29665, notice of public hearing to consider amending Town Code Chapter 123 Building Construction to revise the definition of floor area in Article 8 Innovative and Alternative On-Site Waste Water Treatment Systems.
What is that doing?
There's an issue with when people want to do minor work in their house in a basement or something like that, that under the current law, they'd be required to immediately install an IA system. So we want to be cognizant of that and not overburden people and still work on a longer basis.
So it's defining for, the 25% increase would be inhabitable area.
Right, yeah, bedrooms and.
Okay.
Things that were, and subject to the.
Expansion of the existing living area.
Right, it's subject to the Department of Health approval of the system as well.
Okay, so the trigger, we want to make sure we're talking about usable living space.
Right.
Okay, go ahead, John.
Town Board Resolution ID 29663, notice of public hearing to consider amending Town Code Chapter 177 Septic Rebate and Incentive Program to revisit various provisions of the program. Largely, this has to do with, we're increasing the rebate to 20,000.
Wow.
We're also increasing the availability of, by income up to $1 million for 50% of the costs of, for the rebate system.
Wow, I didn't know we were doing that. But that's, I think, a good move. I think that's, I've heard a lot of people asking about this.
There's been, this is the purpose of why we're doing it the way we do it. We get feedback, we learn, we change, we move with the law, try to make it as applicable as possible and easy to most residents.
Okay. Well, maybe we'll get more takers.
Yeah, we're doing, it's doing pretty well.
Okay, good. 29660 authorizes the supervisor to deliver a purchase option election notice as it relates to the purchase of the Hampton Bay's senior center. We don't own that building. We lease it, so we are moving forward as a board to acquire the building where we have our senior center in Hampton Bay's Community Center. 29639, that's the other section.
Yeah, Town Board Resolution 29639, recall and amend resolution to 18-454, road review application for Blair Kathleen Gaza, Suffolk County TSMAP 900-354-330, situate at West Hampton. Largely, it's to change pave to improve.
Okay. And that's the last resolution. Are there any other add-ons?
We had two.
Add-ons? All right. Let's see what we have. So this is docket ID 29661, it reinstates Ronnie Strange to automotive equipment operator position in highway. And 29695 authorizes the supervisor to sign a satisfaction of mortgage on a community development block grant home improvement. development block grant home improvement loan. All right, any questions about any of those? None? All right, Cindy.
Thank you very much.
You have your agenda. All right, we have about three minutes. Any quick updates?
I got two.
Okay.
I attended with Councilwoman Scolera the Hampton Bay CAC last night. It was a very good meeting. We talked about a lot of issues, including the code enforcement and traffic.
Was code enforcement there?
Yes, Steve Troy came and gave a little summary of what's going on. Lots of questions back and forth. I thought it was a very good meeting. Again, we talked about some other things as well, traffic, some properties along Montauk Highway that aren't looking so great that we're going to try to get looking a little better. And all in all, a very good and informative meeting.
It was positive, wasn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
Did you see the Newsday piece?
Yes.
There's a wonderful piece about Hampton Bayes in Newsday.
Yep.
Has everybody seen it?
Yep.
Really positive.
Yep.
Hopefully, everybody in the Hampton Bayes community will see it and, you know, feel good about their community.
Yes.
Hampton Bayes is moving in very positive directions.
Yep, and I just got one more quick thing. CTV has been moving up. They upgraded their hardware and software, it makes them more efficient. The picture, if you're watching, the picture should be clearer, the audio should be clearer.
It has been.
Good, that's perfect.
It now, it matches the shape of the television, which is nice, too.
Right, yeah. They, just in the first six months of the year, they've done 185 programs, which is, comes to about one a day. So they're working hard and we thank them for helping us out every single day.
As you know, too, I've been doing a bit of a TV show called Talk of the Town, and I've had a number of department heads. I've started to expand it now to go outside. We did Lizen Hatch Shop, that is a town function, though. But we, I also went to the Quag Wildlife Rescue...
Refuge.
Refuge, yeah, which was kind of fun, too, and got to see some of the animals. So if you guys have ideas or want to do a show of your own, CTV is there to assist. We have the editing abilities and it's a nice thing to do, so please take advantage of it.
Okay.
Okay, it is just about 11:00. Is, I guess we're waiting for Connie. We did do in Hampton Bayes a ribbon cutting, and some of you may have been there for the playground. It was fun. I don't know if I talked about that at work session yet, so Douglas Ellerman had donated $50,000 very generously to help construct the playground for the older kids. Parks Department put it in. It's terrific, it's really beautiful. The two playgrounds are there together, they're fenced in, and kids are actively engaged, and I just wanted to once again, you know, thank Douglas Ellerman for that generous gift, and it's going, it's being well-used, so it's a good thing.
Shout out to Carl Bedicasa.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, I spoke when I, when I was at the ribbon cutting, I talked about how playgrounds aren't just about exercise and fun, but it's a place where you make friends. And sometimes, you know, you never know when you need a friend. And we had a young attorney here who was doing a great job for the town, and I considered a friend, and I still do. Carl Bedicasa, he went to the private sector, we were sad to see him go, and he brought back a $50,000 check, that's pretty good, so it's nice to have friends. So for all the children of Hampton Bayes, and actually, everybody uses that park, so...
It's a nice addition, it brings a new dimension to the park to have kids of a little bit older age, you know, climbing on the stuff in there.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm sorry I missed that, I heard it was great.
It's nice, well, there'll be other, you know, we're going to build a comfort station there. The trail is apparently open, I haven't hiked it yet, but hopefully that's, you know, going to get used, that there's a loop trail all around it. All right, is...
Oh, I did have one thing, this 20...
Connie is not here yet?
This, we have our, our hybrid car at Long Beach, and I don't have the information in front of you, it's this...
This Saturday.
This Saturday, four to, I think it's four to eight, but I'm not entirely sure. It's on our website, it's a hybrid expo of electric cars, manufacturers there, we'll also be talking about rebate system, a lot of environmental initiatives in the town of Southampton, and energy, all the things that we're doing. And it's sort of a phase two of the first one that we had in Hampton Bayes, a little bit expanded, so invite everyone there, it's going to be, it's going to be, it's going to be interesting, it's going to be good.
I'll mention one other thing, too, while we wait for Connie and some of the opioid task force leaders to come in. With the US Open, we found that the train service really helped get people here, so there are conversations now between Long Island Railroad, their new director, a guy named, I think, Phil Eng, about increasing train service on the east end. And we are expecting, you know, through the work of Assemblyman Thiel, the commuter train is going to begin next February, that is still on track, on schedule, to use the train reference. And they're also now saying that they think that they can expand even more service, even though they only have one track, if they can construct sightings in a couple places. So basically, out here, there's, depending on the hour, there's a strongly dominant direction of train travel. So in the morning, it's east, in the afternoon, it's west. The problem is, if you have to get that westbound, in the morning, if you have to get the westbound train back, you can't run any eastbound trains, right? So, but if you could get it moving and pull it onto a siding, that would allow the other train to go back, it's really nobody on that westbound train, just they're all on the eastbound train, then you get the eastbound train pass, and then it can move along, potentially get to another siding, let the next train go through. So that's what they're, they're approaching the town, saying they want to develop a system of sightings, several sightings in key locations, and they want to work with us on locating them within their right of way. And I think this is going to work out great, because we have preserved so much land along the railroad tracks, that I believe that there are appropriate locations that won't disturb homeowners, because you don't really want the idling train, you know, sitting there for too long. But I think that we can find spots.
It's interesting, we had a, we had a Sustainability Committee, Nick Palumbo, talks a lot about bike sharing and bike riding, and so they're really at the initial stages of working with the MTA to put small asphalt paths along the right-of-ways, along the tracks, on those spurs, so no matter where the trains are, you'll be able to ride from that point to another destination, if that made sense. So they're trying to connect it from west to Montauk.
They're trying to figure ways to utilize the single track better, and, you know, with modern stabilization and with sightings, they think it's possible, so it's exciting. Connie, we're waiting for you guys to start, so can you bring everybody in? I've been stalling for five minutes here.
Guys, we're all ready, Connie?
Those of you who knew your task force, we're going in.
Chief's giving orders.
We're going in.
Steven, you're, chief, you missed all the accolades I gave the police department earlier about the US Open, I'm sorry you weren't here, you're going to have to watch the video. But now that you're here in person, thank you on behalf of the town for tremendous job in managing that event, the public safety aspects of that event.
You know, a lot of, a lot of, a lot of stuff.
That was a great group effort, absolutely, yeah.
Pretty good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What about the US Open?
I was thinking of that, I was in that traffic.
Exactly. It was nice. We did the experiment this morning, by the way.
Taco?
Yes.
Okay, can I ask, are we still at one for the year, in terms of opioid deaths?
Yes.
Okay.
If you want to speak.
And last year was this very...
Last year at this point was 12.
All right, and Connie, you're going to lead this?
Uh, Drew is.
Drew, okay, so maybe I'll introduce Drew. When did we, Connie, when did we begin this? When did we first form it? It was in...
Mid-October. We're going to take you back through videotapes.
All right, so if we could all be seated, I want to thank everybody for coming out this morning. Today, we're going to be presenting the draft findings and recommendations of the opioid task force. Let me quickly refresh your memory, that last October or so, the town board voted to create an opioid task force to try to make some implementable recommendations, looking locally, and make some recommendations for other agencies outside the town, be they local or state or federal, just ways to deal with a growing crisis. So last year in the town of Southampton, 19 individuals lost their lives in what we believe were preventable deaths. Crossed the board, crossed the town geographically and economically, young people, old people, a lot of them young people with really bright futures, talented people who got caught up, sometimes got prescribed prescription painkillers that were addictive, later found themselves in, you know, not being able to afford those, and turning to heroin, and often laced with a chemical called fentanyl. It really, you know, we were all struggling, what do we do? What do we do about this? There's way too many deaths. And then came a news report that really threw me. It was the granddaughter of Drew Scott, a personal friend of mine, a woman named Hallie Ray, who's lived in Sag Harbor, whose body was found on the side of the road. Couple days later, her boyfriend, I think, also died of an overdose. Drew was shaken, I tried to console him, I know he wanted to make a difference and was grieving and wanted to prevent any other people from dying of this epidemic, and said, what do we do? And I said, I don't know. I don't know what to do. I don't know what to do. We need to come together as a community and start trying to figure out what it is we should be doing. And I asked Drew at that point to work with me in co-chairing an opioid task force. Drew lives in West Hampton, well-known, covered me many times for News 12, but covered really every aspect of Suffolk County and our community, and he said yes. And I was, you know, so happy that he was able to, you know, work through his grieving and dedicate himself to the community and trying to make a difference. And so the opioid task force was formed. This was, I guess, back in October, and Connie Conway took a real leadership role at that point from my office and now in government communications. And we started out with a few people, and it grew, it grew to, I think, over 40 people who wanted to get involved. You know, the good news here, and I don't want to steal anybody's thunder, is, and I hope some of it's attributable to work that we're doing, it seems like we've turned a bit of a corner. I hope it stays that way. You know, last year, though, by this time last year, by toward the end of June last year, 12 preventable deaths had occurred, 12 people had lost their life. This year, one, and one is too many, it's way too many, but statistically, that's, you know, over a 90% drop. It's a significant drop, other areas are dropping, I've never heard of a drop this large anywhere. So, you know, maybe the community coming together and, you know, stepped up law enforcement and, and other things, getting the word out, getting, addressing the stigma of addiction and getting people to come forward is having an effect. But today, we are getting to hear what the subcommittees, and there are now four subcommittees, their findings, and I'm going to stop now, because I know some of this is going to be repeated in what Drew says and what Connie says. So Drew Scott, first, on behalf of the town, thank you for doing this, thank you for coming forward and assembling all these people, and I know you have become a voice on this issue, not just in Southampton, but you're assisting other communities with similar efforts in their opioid task force, so thank you for all that you've been doing.
Good morning, Mr. Supervisor, thank you for that, and we thank the members of the town board for putting this group together, and of course, the hard work of Connie Conway. The opioid addiction task force is ready to issue our draft report to you. We've been working hard over the past eight months, and a number of our committee members are here with us this morning. Before we make our recommendations, what we'd like to do is take you back to the beginning and show you some of the highlights of what we've been doing these past eight months. Let's take a look.
The Southampton Town Opioid Addiction Task Force began in October 2017 because far too many people were dying from opioid drug overdoses. In the town of Southampton, a community of 60,000 people, there were 19 deaths in 2017. The nationwide epidemic of opioid addiction was hitting home. The numbers were staggering. In 2016, 64,000 people nationwide died from opioid drugs. That's more than the number of people killed in the Vietnam War. And it wasn't just an urban problem, it was spreading into every corner of the country, including the town of Southampton. It hit home in September 2017 with former News 12 anchor Drew Scott, a West Hampton resident. His beautiful 22-year-old granddaughter Hallie Ray Ulrich was found on the side of the road, the victim of a heroin overdose. Tests showed there were traces of fentanyl, a synthetic heroin that is now widely available on the street. When it happened to his family, many wondered if it could happen to theirs. So the town of Southampton Opioid Addiction Task Force was created to find solutions to stop the epidemic. It started with a dozen people, but soon it grew to twice that size, and now there are 42 members of the task force. They are educators, medical professionals, people in recovery, or people directly affected by the crisis. The task force was divided into three subcommittees to develop recommendations for the town board. They are prevention, enforcement, and treatment. And later, a fourth subcommittee was added, recovery, to help people in recovery maintain a healthy lifestyle. The task force turned to the public for help and immediately scheduled a public forum in mid-November. There were 250 people in attendance for the first forum at Hampton Bayes High School, entitled "It Hits Home." People spoke about frustrations with insurance companies trying to get help for loved ones addicted to painkillers that were too easily distributed. Some complained there were no young people on the task force, so they were recruited, including the 16-year-old cousin of Hallie Ray.
It's a group effort, it's not just going to be, oh, Southampton School is going to fix this, no, it's, it's, everyone needs to come together.
The task force then held a youth forum in January and another one in March. Students from several high schools gathered at the Greek Orthodox Church and spoke about friends and family getting hooked on drugs. They offered advice about how to keep kids from experimenting with these deadly drugs. Many called for more after-school activities or things to do at night and on weekends to keep them from getting bored, from turning to drugs. The urgency was getting stronger, and the task force initiated some programs without waiting for the final draft report. A health pamphlet and poster was made up for schools, doctors' offices, and pharmacies for distribution. The police department handed them out to families when they responded to overdoses and used Narcan to revive victims. The Southampton Police Department also developed a bridge program to link survivors with the treatment subcommittee, to walk them through the path to recovery, to find them resources, to get them in a drug rehab program. The task force also held a medical forum at Stony Brook Southampton Hospital in February and heard from a packed room of medical professionals. They, too, were frustrated.
We weren't as fortunate with my grandson, at 15 years of age. Well, yeah, 15, he, December 28th, 2009, he was in the hospital, they gave him nine days after an overdose. He passed on April 22nd, Thursday.
Many described how oftentimes, people addicted don't get adequate help to kick the addiction, and once they do, where do they go?
Unfortunately, I can't tell you how many people I've gotten calls from, and I say go to the ER, I'm not going to mention any age, because that's not the point of this talk. Oh, you're not drunk enough. Oh, opiates, no, no, you don't die from opiate withdrawal. Go home. Wow, we had young professionals, or anyone, walking into an emergency room, I need help. Help me. I'm sure it's not the easiest thing for a 19-year-old to walk in and say, I'm trashed all the time. And what do we say? We use the term, go murder, get out of my ER. And the truth is, we use that term because we don't know what to do with you, because we don't have the resources from the beginning of the conversation.
It was a question that triggered a... It was a question that triggered a road trip in March to Thrive, a resource center in Hopgog, the only state-funded facility on Long Island that gives people in recovery a place to socialize without temptations of alcohol or drugs. It's also a place where many in recovery rebuild their lives by getting help for employment, housing, and counseling. Another public forum was held in April. "It Hits Home," Part Two, was held at Southampton High School, where Suffolk County District Attorney Timothy Seeny spoke about making strides in getting opioids and the deadly synthetic fentanyl and heroin off the street.
We've increased our resources in targeting drug spots in our communities. We've increased the number of detectives in our precincts who are focused on drug dealing in our communities. And we rolled out a hotline, 631-852-NARC, N-A-R-C, which is a partnership with the Suffolk County Crime Stoppers, where we'll provide, we'll provide money for tips that lead to arrests. You can remain anonymous even if you receive a cash reward. And due to the increase in resources and the tips hotline, we've been able to increase the number of narcotic search warrants by over 250% since I took office as Police Commissioner.
But he also called on parents to look in the mirror and wake up, to consider that their own drinking habits could be sending the wrong message to children. Educating parents may just change the culture of drug abuse, he advised. The task force has heard from many people in eight months, but probably the most profound testimony came from people who lost loved ones to this epidemic. They spoke at the candlelight vigil on Mother's Day Eve. They shared gut-wrenching stories. There were 359 votive candles formed in a circle on the stage at Good Grand Park in Hampton Bays to represent the number of confirmed deaths in Suffolk County in 2017, the most in any county in New York State. About 80 more cases are pending toxicology reports. The middle ring of 19 candles represented the number of opioid deaths in Southampton Town, including Hallie Ray. The largest single candle in the middle honors the one life taken so far this year.
Well, that's our introduction to our draft report. And now what we're going to do is present to you the Prevention Committee Subcommittee, chaired by Nancy Leinott, the Youth Services Director, and she's going to introduce her team in the Subcommittee for Prevention. Nancy.
Hey, Cam. Always good to see you.
Hi. Good morning, everybody. So, as you might have seen from the back page of this report, the Prevention Subcommittee was quite large. But four of us are here this morning to fill you in on what our recommendations are. So we're going to be starting with Lynn Torakamo, who is a community member who joined the Prevention Subcommittee early on, Kim Laubie, you're probably familiar with, and Lars Clemmensen. And so Lynn, you want to go ahead?
Good morning.
Can I just say, before Lynn starts, that Lynn attended the first forum that we had in Hampton Bays and wanted to get involved, and I immediately recruited her to get involved, and she did. And she's been very active.
She's been very active, and she's a terrific asset. She really has provided good perspective. She has been committed and helpful and reliable, and we love having her. So, thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Lynn.
So, as most of you know now, I did grow up in Southampton, attended public schools, and I live and work here. And I do want to thank you for, you know, being receptive of me when I did come up to you after, because that was not something I would normally do, nor was sitting here now. But I guess you do what you need to do when you feel passionate about something. So, thank you. I am here because between my younger brother and I, we know two handfuls of people that have actually lost their lives to this, from this community. They are our neighbors. We had a fatal overdose in the house right next door to ours. Colleagues, four of my colleagues have lost their children. And unfortunately, I know even more people that, as I sit here right now, are struggling today with their addictions. And you wouldn't know it if you saw them around town. They have jobs, family, houses, but they're taking prescriptions from their grandparents' medicine cabinet. They have secret bank accounts from their significant others to fund their addiction. My point is, we need to get to those that hear opioid epidemic and think it's something foreign that doesn't concern them. We can't just discuss specific drugs. Drugs come and go. Addiction is a constant. It stays. So, the question is, why? The Prevention Committee came together to identify priorities and process and asked, "What are the principles of prevention?" Last December, data was collected from high school students in Southampton Town. 87% report experiencing stress or anxiety in the last 30 days. 78% report difficulties in schoolwork, activities, and social life because of stress. 42% report symptoms of depression in the last year, which is well above national averages. So, we met with and listened to young people in high school at two different youth forums, and we also met with young adults into their 30s that are in recovery and are therefore able to look back on their past and tell us what actually made a difference in their lives and the choices they made. We have based our recommendations on these findings. The recommendations we came up with are designed to minimize risk and increase protection. What can we do as a community? What can be implemented by the local government? So Nancy will continue.
Well, I think Kim's going to pick up here with our first set of recommendations, which are about community education and awareness.
Can I just say, so Kim, I also know quite well, and she's been very active in working with kids, at-risk kids, running HUGS, which is a great organization, and they do summer workshops and things like that. And Kim was involved with both of the youth forums that were held in helping, you know, solicit input from the kids as to what they thought was the best approach to reducing opioid use.
Thank you for that. It's been a pleasure to be part of this. I have served on lots of task forces from the governor down to local, and so I appreciate the process of bringing everybody together. And local issues get solved by local folks. And Lynn is a great testament to somebody getting involved and sharing her perspective. I'm also a person in long-term recovery and a product of my own program that I run today, so I know this personally and professionally. What we do know about prevention is that it is a long-term process. As a matter of fact, in order to have community change, it takes five to 10 years of consistent effort. As we use the science of prevention and using the data that we collected, we can begin to make recommendations that not only impact just one group, it impacts all. The schools are doing a great job, and we know that, and we want to look to support the schools. But the truth is, this is a community issue. And in every young person's life and in every adult life, there are four main areas of your life that are impacted: their peers, their schools, their community, and their families. And so this group knows that it's really important, from a peer level, to create more programs that are out there for kids to be engaged in drug and alcohol-free activities. We want meaningful opportunities for them to participate in conversations like this and conversations in leadership in their school. We want to help build their skills, and we want to build those evidence-based programs in schools that are ongoing and move from just one-shot speaker stories, because we really need to have a long-term support system wrapped around our young people. As Lynn mentioned, the mental health issues are quite high amongst our young people, and we want to make sure that we're supporting the schools in developing great supports for that, finding those natural go-to teachers and coaches, and making sure that they have the tools to even speak this language, because this is a different language for most, and it becomes confusing, and it's so big. So we really want to support those additional folks who are working with kids in a very natural way. On our parents' side, we want to make sure, again, that we're increasing their awareness and their education and that they have, understand that we cannot minimize underage drinking and treat it like it's a safe thing because at least kids aren't doing heavier drugs. We need to understand that this conversation is about where addiction begins and not where addiction, and inclusive of where addiction ends. But the more we invest in prevention, that dollar we spend in prevention, we save 10 to 22 on the treatment side, and even higher as you begin to dive into different things, the investment has to be done there. So parents getting great education, schools getting good support, using evidence-based programs and models all the way, and using the science behind this, is really some of the ways that we are going to begin to raise the level of awareness and build those protective factors. Clear, accurate information, and the one simple thing that would be awesome is the support of great media campaigns and great tools. And your local not-for-profits oftentimes don't have access to that. But if we could do a town-wide media campaign on all different levels, from digital to print, that begin to educate parents, empower young people, and support schools, those are some simple ways that we can begin to get the message out there and stop focusing on the drug of the day and look at substance use disorder as a whole. We also want to support the education in working with the medical community. And we know the state has come down with some laws that will help train our medical community, but we also want to work with them as partners. So I'm going to turn it over to the next person. I thank you for the time and the commitment to this process.
So I'm just going to talk about our next group of recommendations, which is really increasing resources and support for youth. Kim addressed that a little bit. But they're really about strategies to help youth become more connected, more supported, and have better access to the services that they need. One of the things we heard from young adults as well as young people is a factor that led to their drug use was a lack of connection, a feelingness of alone, not knowing who to turn to for support and not having the skills to find those ways for themselves. So the recommendations come down to, the town can support increasing youth access to caring and supportive adults, and that's in all kinds of community settings. It can be in faith communities, it can be in scout troops, it can be in sporting leagues, it can be in youth centers, and provide training for those adults, something like mental health first aid or something, you know, that we can adapt for that. Also, we have noticed recently that local schools are starting to find resources to add to their pupil personnel, support staff in schools, which is really important, and we think, we would love to see the town support schools in those efforts. We would love to see adequate staffing for pupil support in every school building. Increasing youth employment opportunities, including internships and vocational training for both school-age youth and for young adults. There's a young adult community out here that struggles sometimes to find meaningful work, and we'd love to find ways to support that. These programs not only build skills, but they give, as Kim mentioned actually earlier, we must work in the same field, youth opportunities to participate in the community in meaningful ways. We want to build on and expand online access to information, treatment, and related resources for youth, including community outlets for self-care, recreation, and socializing. We'd love kids to be able to go on an app and find out where they can go to do yoga or Reiki or play dodgeball or whatever it is they want to do. Developing more indoor facilities for year-round youth-centered activities and events was a common thread in the folks that we talked with, particularly a major arena that allows us to attract major talent, so we can put that on the long-range plan. But in the short term, I think we can look to expand youth access within communities, additional youth centers and other places that are friendly for kids to gather, helping to build community businesses that really focus on providing activities for youth. And lastly, developing solutions for reliable regional transportation so that kids can actually access services and programs that are available. It's a huge problem now. It continues to be. I know the answers are a little bit elusive, but this is something that is always an important barrier. So for many of these recommendations, we already have an infrastructure that we can build on to accomplish them. So it's just that, really, the opportunities to expand them are currently limited, and so one of the things we hope we can work on together is finding ways to do that building and make them more available. And Lars is going to wrap up for us.
Yeah, my job's to bring us home. I just want to thank the town board, Supervisor Schneiderman, for not only putting this on the stove, but keeping it on the front burner this year, keeping everybody focused on this the entire year, and setting up as a priority not letting it end today, not letting the report that you received start to collect dust tomorrow, and keep it a living document. We certainly want to thank Connie for shepherding us, shepherding cats throughout the entire year to get us to this point, because we know that from prevention to recovery and enforcement and everything in between, that the town just will not work. Workforce, tourism, our economy, our ability to prosper, it won't work if we have this demon that we're not wrestling with. So I think the thread that runs through all of this is that Lynn and Kim and Nancy all, and certainly our task force, talked about was connection, connection to your community. And we see that in those TAP surveys that the Youth Bureau puts out. There's some good news in those surveys, that kids are trying drugs and alcohol and engaging in sexual behavior less and later, but what they are indicating is increased stress and anxiety and isolation. And so while they may be taking negative steps later, they're surely setting the deck for that to be the next step for them. So the data that the young people are telling us is something we really need to focus on. The new generation is called iGen, like an iPhone. They're no longer millennials. Anyone born after 1995 is that iGen. They learn differently, they interact differently, they behave differently. So the more that we work with schools and youth development services like HUGS and others and get to know kids, then we can find innovative ways for connection. It's a multidisciplinary focus, as you heard here. And, you know, to bring us home, the community coalitions are ready to keep working with the town. This isn't a burden that you all need to take on yourselves. You're the catalyst, the facilitator, the gasoline for this. So continue to pull together and invest in organizations like SAFE in Sag Harbor, the Riverhead Coalition for Safe and Drug-Free Youth. There's an emerging coalition in West Hampton Beach that includes parents, schools, and police, and the use of school resource officers, and investing in Chief Skrenecy and his department to make sure that his officers have the best training and have the ability and capacity to work in schools with school leaders, teachers, and, most importantly, kids. As you go into your future budgets, think about it in a different way, think about prevention in a different way, match the amount of funding that the town invests in enforcement, treatment, and recovery, the aggregate ambulance calls, Narcan training and equipment costs, the cost of arresting and processing drug crimes, the courts as it relates to these offenses. Don't take money from them, but those are reactive steps that are so necessary and working, but they're responsive to our reality. The Prevention Committee wants to consider in the budget process ways to bring parity to the prevention side of the house that will help assist our community to stop taking on water here. You can administer those programs like you do grants. Let your community coalitions come to you and make the case for what they're doing that is research-based and effective. And I know you'll have community organizations ready to sit at this table and make their case. So, again, a thank you to the town board and all the staff and resources that you provided to bringing us to today.
Lars, thank you. I know you're a super-busy person, not just in Hampton Bays as school superintendent, but with, I think you chair the Superintendents Association as well. Of course, without involvement from the schools, none of this would be working, none of this would work. We've had, you know, Hampton Bays, we've also had Nick Dino, Superintendent in Southampton, Tuckahoe School Superintendent, and other involved school leaders. So thank you for that. I know you work so hard to educate these kids, and that one candle in the middle for the death that was for this year, that was somebody who graduated Hampton Bays High School, I believe.
Yes.
And it's got to really, you know, hit you personally when you lose a member of your community and a graduate of the school. And we also know that, once they start on this path, these drugs are so powerful, they hijack the brain and cause people to, you know, make really bad decisions. The more we can do to prevent that first step, you know, the first use of these substances, the better. And that falls directly on the schools. You're with them every day. You're with them every day. It's challenging, the social pressures, the economic pressures families face, and you got your work cut out for you. So, again, I think, you know, our efforts are going to be ongoing. And Tommy John, you're an educator as well. I have a background in education. You know, we have You know, we have got to, when, when you share those statistics that you've worked on, Nancy, about the stress levels these kids are under, you know, we've got to find ways to give them constructive activities, to bring them together, give them a positive sense of their future socially and economically. I think the work is really just beginning in that regard.
It's scientific. You know, the happiest day of a kid's life will give you a five to 10-time increase in dopamine in your brain, but an opiate is exponentially more than that. So when we're, when we're fighting for connection to increase happiness and joy and connection, we're fighting against a monster.
Yeah. And thank you, I never heard that term iGen. That's the first time I've heard.
I have a book, I'll share it with you.
So now I can tell my son which generation he's in.
Ninety, ninety-five and later, iJenners.
So he's an iGen. Again, though, thank you.
Thank you.
On behalf of really the town, I really, all those in, in education who participated in this task force.
Yeah, I'd also like to give my thanks. I was part of the Prevention Committee. Thank you to you guys here and all the other people on the committee. And especially, I think we realized early on that we had to talk to the kids and to the young adults, and we did, we reached out to them, and I think that we can't forget that we need to continue to reach out to the kids and the young adults there. You know, there's where we can change things and change their behaviors and a very important part of all this, but thank you guys for your input.
Great suggestions. Thank you to the whole subcommittee.
Thank you, Nancy.
To the leaders, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Lars, Nancy, Lynn, and Kim. We have some folks that we'd like to recognize today. Now we have Hallie Ray's mother is here, Sally, and also we have the youngest member of our task force, Mackenzie Jenkins there.
Hey, Mackenzie. Woo!
Also, we're honored, we have representatives from New York State Oasis, the Office of Alcohol and Substance Abuse Services, Manuel Mosquera, who is the chief of the Regional Downstate Office. Thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
And Oscar Rivera from the Long Island Regional Office. We appreciate your presence here today, and if you have questions, please don't hesitate to, to ask. Also, we're welcoming Robert Challoner from Stony Brook Southampton Hospital. He's in the audience now and taking it all in, and we so appreciate your cooperation at Southampton Hospital for all of the doctors and nurses and, and medical personnel who participated in that medical forum that we had several months ago, was very successful. Now I'd like to present the Treatment Committee chaired by Dr. Karen Martin. Come on up, Dr. Martin. And she's also going to be assisted by Susan Sargent, and they're going to make their presentation as the Treatment Subcommittee.
Susan will be here shortly.
Hi. I am Dr. Karen Martin. I am the Acting Executive Director of Alternative Counseling Services. I've been in this field for about 100 years. My family's skin is very good, but this is really a very serious topic. And it's not, it is opioids, but it's not just opioids. I think what some people don't know about treatment is that treatment is, it needs to be person-centered. So it, you know, it's not your grandmother's treatment anymore. It's what do you need? How can we help you? Rather than, you have to come here, you have to do this, you have to do that, and then we'll see. It's really a joint effort in engaging people as human beings, not as addicts. We don't even use that word anymore a lot of times. It's an addicted person. It's an illness. It's, it's not a choice. Nobody wakes up in the morning and says, gee, I think I'll become an alcoholic, or I think I'll become an addict today. That's not the way it works. One day, it happens. It, it happens. And it's a whole physiological, biological thing that happens, and your, your brain changes and your, everything changes. So it has to be treated individually, and it needs to be understood that it's not a choice. You also can't stop it. Once you have, your body and your brain has been taken over, this is not about willpower. It's not about willpower. People say, well, just stop. Well, listen, people tell me, stop eating chocolate. I can probably do that if I wanted to, I'm not going to die, but sometimes you might die from stopping whatever drug you're taking if you don't do it properly. So my, yes, my name is Karen and I'm a chocoholic, but I'm not going to die from that, you know? Somebody else might die from alcoholism or opiate addiction and overdose, because you, your brain changes sometimes, and they say accidental overdose. People look at that and say, really? Accidental? Well, yeah, accidental, because your brain forgets, and your brain is saying, give me more, give me more. And you can't stop, and you'll do anything to get it. Nice, pretty, upper-middle-class, lower-middle, poor people, rich people, it has no boundaries. It doesn't care. It doesn't care. So I think we, in order to fight this, I think everything the Prevention Subcommittee said is absolutely accurate. This is something that we have to all work together with. So I am the Acting Executive Director, happens to be of Alternative Counseling Service, which is right down the road here, and we also have an office in Riverhead. It's really, really important that we work together with prevention, with the police, with the town governments, with the county governments. We all need to work together, because, you know what? God forbid, it could happen to me, my family, or yours. Sometimes you don't even see it.
Nice, Susan.
Hi. So what I'd like to talk about now are our talking points that, that we had come up with. And what I think we need to do is take the stigma away. Alternatives, I don't know if you know, is over 40 years old. It is a Victorian house, an old Victorian house, with the park, it's like in plain sight, but nobody knows it's there. Because 40-something years ago, when it was founded, it was shameful to be an alcoholic or to be addicted to drugs. It was shameful, but like really shunned shameful. So now, so then what they did was they had the parking lot in the back of the house, which is the entrance, okay? And the handicap entrance is in the front of the house. So back in the day, people could go and not, and be totally, you know, invisible. Today, it's not like that anymore. It's like, good for you, you know? Good for you. And, and so we need to change the stigma and have a campaign, an education campaign that talks about the stigma of, you know, we've got to break that. It just is, it's not helpful not to. We have to break the stigma, oh, you go to AA? Oh, that's, yes, it's anonymous, but anonymous doesn't mean secret. It's a whole different thing. So 12-step programs work. Do they work for 100% of everybody? No. Do they help 100% of people? I'd like to think they do. Are they exactly what the doctor ordered for some people? Absolutely. It's there, it's support, it's, it's important, it's an important part of recovery, it's an important part of treatment. So NA, AA, Alateen, Al-anon, it helps you understand what is going on. I said, so, so that's really important. We have to, so in order to do that, we have to include AA, NA, and all of that into our conversation, our daily conversation. When we have groups in any treatment facility, we tell them, yes, you know, what we say in group stays in group, but we want you to go take what you've learned and use it. It doesn't mean you can't use it. So that's, that's the whole point of AA and NA, is to absorb information, what works for you, somebody else's story, and then live it. So, and I'm sure the Recovery will talk about that a whole lot more. Create social activities for people in recovery. Rock for recovery, run for recovery, healthy things that people can do, people in recovery can do together. And you know what? It could be the families of people in recovery. Request and verify that all businesses in Southampton Town have insurance policies supporting the Parity Act for substance and mental health benefits. That's really important, because we are battling insurance companies. It used to be 30 days in residential treatment, inpatient treatment rather. Now you're lucky if you get eight to 10 days, okay? Eight days, even 10 days, is an extended detox period. It's not inpatient. You're physically there, but you need more time. You need more time. It used to be standard.
Well, yeah, I just wanted to jump in on something. I'm sorry I was late.
That's okay.
About Philadelphia. The, the point about the health insurance, I consult to providers nationally. I've worked in all but two states, and so I have a good sense, I think, of what's going on in terms of insurance, but each state is morphing right now. They can change the requirements for their coverages since the Affordable Care Act has said, okay, states can make these decisions. New York fortunately is a bit more broad-minded than most, and I believe this is going to promote the parity, and I probably, maybe I committed, this parity is not, should be P-A-R-I-T-Y, not making fun.
Yes.
And I just wanted to be clear on that. And the problem is, it's the insurance coverage and making sure that ideally, as many of your contractors and important organizations here have coverage for this, because it impacts everybody, and it impacts dependence of employees as well. In terms of the copays and the like, it can be very hard to put your finger on it. In, in the course of my role with the committee, I called an awful lot of folks just to find out what they were doing, were they discriminating? Many people have heard or in our forums, they had said basically that there were people showing up for help at a treatment center and being told that they couldn't go in for overnight treatment, and maybe you covered this already, because they had to fail twice in outpatient treatment before they could be covered. I don't see anybody doing that with diabetes or with cancer or with anything else. And yet it is as, as broad an issue as what happens, so.
What, what would happen is somebody would come in for help, and we would do an assessment, and we would know that this person needs a higher level of care, and the insurance company won't pay for it. So what they're saying really is, you need this, but you can't have that unless you fail twice. So we're really setting people up to fail, and if you're ready to go and get help, you need help then, not after you failed twice, seriously? And failing twice means using again.
Sure, could be deadly.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So that, that's really important. Thank you.
And one of, one of our thoughts about this was perhaps coming up with a dedicated phone line for insurance denials. It could be anonymous. People could call in and say, I, I went to go see this provider, and they said I had to fail twice. Or the managed behavioral health care provider said, no, we're not paying, paying for this right now. And a lot of, most of the managed behavioral health care providers, who are the intermediaries between the insurance companies and the patients, will just randomly disavow covering anything for certain people. And our thought was that if we could have some type of, or if there was a statewide denial number, that would be, well, at least we could get some information to go after the insurers and the managed behavioral health care companies, all of whom, similar to the insurers, are for-profit, and they make more money by denying treatment. Excuse me, they say denying coverage, which is the equal to denying treatment.
That may be something we can discuss with the Oasis folks.
Absolutely.
Some of the other things we talked about were, and it goes along with the stigma, sober houses. You know, a sober house is not a frat house, it's not a party house. It's for people who are seriously, need to be in an environment in order to stay sober. Sometimes I have a, we have a client that lives at home with mom and dad, dad's an alcoholic, it's hard for him to be there, so he goes to his room. Well, isolation is one of his triggers. So he's stuck between a rock and a hard place. So we really need to have more sober homes, but we, they need to, not in my backyard. Well, it's not leprosy, you know? But that's how it's perceived.
What's an appropriate size for a sober home?
Oh, I, I don't, Mark Ethley could answer that better than me. Sorry, Mark.
That's all right. Let me just carry this.
It's typically a relatively small community, and it does vary across the country, but it is not usually more than 10 people.
10 or 12, yeah.
10 to 12, and it's much more of a supportive community. I've seen this in universities also where they have sober houses.
Sober dorms.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's one of our task force members, Dr. Van Arsdale. We're searching around that subject right now, so it's a very complicated subject.
Sure.
Are zoning codes, do they prohibit sober housing? Or is it, I know we define a family, though the code says no more than four unrelated people, we, we do tend to view families as individuals living together as a family, sharing kitchen, not locking, you know, not separate key locks on the doors, sharing living spaces. Though we do also limit how many cars may be at a property and things like that. So, you know, obviously, I think we understand that living in a healthy environment, not being exposed to certain things, it helps with the recovery, yet we also are concerned with neighbors and impacts the neighbors. So finding the right model there that can allow for people to live in healthy conditions as well as protecting neighbors from, you know, too, too much activity.
Well, I think that's, that's the myth. It's not about too much activity. They're just people who need a place to live, they go to work, they go to their treatment.
I mean, we're just more like a density thing. So if you live next to a home, that's a single-family home, you sort of expect that there'll be, you know, a certain number of people per bedroom, and a certain number of cars, a certain number of garbage, but if you, if you start to exceed that, it feels more crowded. Too many cars outside, garbage overflowing and things like that. So just kind of balancing, balancing that.
Now, I, I understand what you're saying, but I think that, that that is part of the issue. And cars is something we don't have to worry about, because most people in recovery don't have cars. Not in recovery, in recovery that came out of, in an inpatient into a sober home. Car is not an issue. So some people have transportation, a lot of people don't. Most sober homes, there are rules, like you have to keep X, you have to keep your place tidy.
Do they typically have a house manager as well, or?
Some do, yes. Yeah. So, but again, you know, I'm sure Mark can speak more to that than, than I can. I know, but I don't have any, so I don't want to overstep my, my bounds. We need to encourage young people in recovery to speak at school forums. It's funny, because there, we have groups of kids. You know, you got the, you got the sports kids, you've got the really smart kids.
Sports kids can be really smart kids, too.
I knew I was going to get in trouble for this, but then you have the sober kids, and then you have a group of kids that maybe aren't so sober kids. We, we need to melt, we need to, it's, it's okay, you know? We need to build a safe environment, that everybody feels safe, not just physically safe. Our schools are great in terms of physically safe, but I'm not so sure. I think we could do better with that other kind of internal safety. In East, okay, Thrive is wonderful, but we need something on the East End like a Thrive. How we do that? How we do that, I'm not sure. But I think that that's something that we can all work towards and look into. Because it's just a wonderful place where people, sober people, people in early recovery, twenty years recovery, doesn't matter, have a place to go, to think, to enjoy, to be, to help, to be helped. It just is the whole ballgame in terms of keeping oneself in recovery. And finally, to be creating a marketing campaign for outpatient services. We have three outpatient services in, four. Hampton Bays has one very small program that Catholic charity runs. We have one small program in Southampton. The next one is not to East Hampton. Now, remember, these are folks, a lot of DWIs, not everything is opiate, a lot of DWIs, which means what? No transportation. We have people coming from Montauk. We have one small Phoenix House outpatient service in East Hampton, and we have the Dunes. That's it. And we're all small out there. But people are coming from Montauk to us. Well, why? Because, you know, I know too many people in East Hampton. So we really need to be able to expand our services, you know, in terms of that. We also need to get into the schools. We are in Southampton High School. And we're in a lot of the schools, in the elementary schools for prevention. But I'm talking about counseling prevention and getting in there to do some counseling and treatment into the schools. And Southampton High School is our pilot, and we're in there. And I have to tell you, just this year, we have gotten six referrals for treatment for kids thirteen to seventeen.
Well, I think you need to know, there's some programs, and you're going to know more about this than I do. One that I'm familiar with, this is a place in Wisconsin where I've been working, where the schools are all adopting what's called a PQR, which is a way of students identifying other students that might be having issues. And referral.
That's part of teen intervene.
Yeah.
We have that.
And that's proving to be extremely productive in terms of getting people early on and listening, kids listening to kids.
Yeah.
The other thing that I think I didn't mention is that there is a new, lots of developments in trying to deal with opioids in terms of, and not just kids, forty-five to fifty-five year olds are just in lots of issues. And a lot of mental health and drug abuse is going together. So you need to be able to flag both or one, since many people with mental health will then try to self-medicate, and it's a problem. But some of the newer things are more technologically involved and are being very successful.
We are now charged with, Oasis licensed, and Oscar can talk to this a little bit, we are charged with providing up to a moderate level of mental health services. And mental health facilities are mandated to provide up to a moderate level of substance abuse services. So, because we know that it's co-mangled, we know that. So it's called co-occurring disorders. So we are doing our best to treat that.
Right. Thank you for all those.
I just, I did want to say one thing. What struck me was that we have a lot of opportunity for prevention. And sitting as liaison to your task force, it struck me that there's a huge industry around people treating people. And there were many methods that were offered, from drugs to treat drugs to recovery areas, sober houses, a huge gamut of treatment. And the one obstacle was obviously, for most things, was the cost that involved. So the cost in prevention, when I started to compare that to the cost of treatment, it's a huge, hugely different thing. And has become complex on the treatment side. Incredibly complex, from funding, you're at the mercy of federal government quite often. The things that we could do as a town would be, it struck me that we could be able to provide facilities on a small scale as much as our zoning laws would allow. But that's also a complex issue, as you pointed out. I was, it was just interesting to have a whole bunch of people sitting around a table who basically each represented a different way to try to treat an incredibly horrific disease that's affecting a lot of people. And some are more effective than others, but I, to be honest with you, I could never really perceive that, you know, what was more effective than. There are a lot of success. The one thing that wasn't included was drug court. And I'm sorry about that because some of the success, I think, has come out of drug courses, court is also part of that.
We do work with drug courts a lot.
Anyway, it's a tough problem. I appreciate.
Well, thank you all.
But we'll continue to work.
Thank you all for giving us time to hear us.
All right. Thank you, Karen, and thank you, Susan. And now we're going to call our police chief up to the podium, or up to, would you prefer the podium, chief?
Table.
Chief Skrynicki on the enforcement subcommittee. And we're falling a little behind on schedule, so we've got one more committee after enforcement. So we'll hand it over to our chief.
Thank you, Tru. I'm going to be joined by Tom McAbey, represents the Big Red Box. And I think what I'd like to impress upon the board is that some of the things that we're going to talk about as recommendations are actually already initiated, and I think are starting to show some very positive results. And I'd like to preface my remarks by saying that although the police department is clearly involved in law enforcement, we see our role as touching awareness, education, of course enforcement, and even treatment. We recognize that you cannot arrest your way out of a situation like this. Law enforcement across the nation has taken a different look at the user in this situation, who was once criminalized, is now being viewed as an individual with a serious medical problem. And so there's some very significant dynamics in the way law enforcement, including our police department, approaches this. We're, and we've talked about this at some of our meetings, we recognize that probably the best way, or the most definitive way to turn the tide on this is through the next individual, trying to prevent that next person from stepping into or walking down the hallway that ends up in destruction. So a lot of our efforts are focused that way. But we begin with tracking. We begin with collecting data. We were not as proficient as we are now in collecting that data. The supervisor commented before on what is going on in terms of our acceleration from sixteen, 2016, to 2017, and our deceleration now in 2018. So progress is clearly being made. He gave you the numbers before. It was twelve this time last year, deaths that is, compared to one. As was mentioned, one is too many, but that is some significant improvements. And mixed in with tracking becomes analytics and looking at patterns. So we want to know where are these overdoses occurring? We're looking at locations, we're looking at associated crimes that may be happening in those locations, deaths from cars, some break-ins and property crimes that may be occurring to help somebody to supply this habit. We're also looking at what is in the product within this tracking. Is this prescription drugs? Is this heroin? Are there additives to this? We see, when we look at some of the statistics, that there are spikes, where there are three or four deaths last year in one small timeframe. And when we look at the analysis on the product, we realize that there was fentanyl laced into those products. So we're trying to be more cognizant of that. We're engaged in public awareness when we see that. We want to get the message out to the user that there's fentanyl in the product right now. Beware of that. Unfortunately, we find that some users are actually drawn to that. But nevertheless, we feel obligated to make that public notification that this substance that's in the street right now may be more dangerous than you think.
They're drawn to it because it's a more powerful high.
Correct. Yes, sadly, but that is documented by some interviews with some users and other evidence. We've increased our investigative efforts, and we've changed some of our investigative efforts. Over the last year, we now assign a detective to go out to every overdose and to be part of the investigation, where prior it was a first responder looking at it mostly from a first aid situation. Now we're looking at that as an opportunity to get information regarding the supply, regarding the substance itself again, and other things that will help us to disturb the distribution of illicit drugs. We find that at that moment in time, sadly, but at that moment in time when somebody is overdosed, whether they survive or not, we are getting more cooperation from the user, if he or she survives, and family members, who are more inclined at that time to tell us, this is a supplier, this is where it's coming from. So again, that goes to our efforts to disturb and disrupt the distribution chain. We're coordinating our information sharing, we're working with local law enforcement on the East End, all the village PDs, we're in constant contact, the Suffolk County PD and the Suffolk County District Attorney's Office. And we follow up now, when we do make arrests, with the DA on how that prosecution is moving forward. We have Narcan available to every one of our officers and all of our detectives. And just, again, we track that as well. So in 2017, at this point in the year, there were ten Narcan saves. This year, there are nine. But I would point out that among those nine for this year, one individual was Narcan four times. So there's less people being subjected to overdose and Narcan.
Just stop for one second, I want to underscore that. That here's an individual whose life was saved by Narcan.
Four times.
And after that, three more times, that same person's life was saved by Narcan. Did we ever get that person to get into treatment?
I'll talk about that in a moment. It's called the bridge. That person was offered that, and, well, I'll bring that in.
But I think the reason why I'm stressing it is it shows to the degree to which these drugs are taking over your brain functions, or hijacking your brain.
Yes.
Also, as I understand, the drug is so powerful that requires more Narcan administered per overdose.
If it's fentanyl, at least.
If it's fentanyl, absolutely, yes.
You know, this individual almost died and continues to use. Now, you think of most rational brain, rational person would say, I'll never do that again. That almost killed me. No, three more times. It's amazing. It's amazing how powerful these drugs are in terms of affecting our rational thought.
And that kind of segues me right to the next point to be made. As the police department engages in these repetitive saves, it pains us to see that we're doing this and it keeps on happening. So several months ago, we came up with the idea of trying to bridge the gap from first responder to treatment, and the treatment subcommittee of this task force. So being cognizant of HIPAA laws and restrictions, we spoke with our attorneys here in town, as well as the District Attorney's Office, and we crafted a voluntary shared information form, so that if we are Narcan-ing somebody and saving somebody, we present that form to the individual, ask them if they would like to complete that, and allow us to share that information with the treatment subcommittee. So that the treatment subcommittee in there, whatever way they choose, or whatever way they think would be best appropriate to this individual, can make a direct outreach. And there have been some studies that show that when you reach out to someone, rather than waiting for them to come to you, you might be a little more successful. Certainly, we want to take advantage of every opportunity to get that person some help, so that we're not there again.
What's the compliance rate, or have you?
Well, we've had several, and that individual that I mentioned, who was saved four times, did consent to give up his information. Unfortunately, in that particular case, even though he was approached, he declined assistance after one approach. But nevertheless, we're going to make that offering every time.
This is the same person who?
Same person who was Narcan four times.
His girlfriend, is it?
His girlfriend is the singular person who died this year. And that's under investigation. There's some connectivity between him and her death that I can't get into at the moment. So that, Bridge the Gap is an initiative that some other law enforcement agencies are actually copying, including Riverhead right now. Community outreach is another big part of our overall package. It's not listed on the bullets, but I would like to talk about that a little bit. We are engaging and have been engaging in awareness training. We've asked some of the community civic associations to allow us some time, and they have. We've gone down, we've done Narcan training, we've issued Narcan to people who would like it. We're bringing, are increasing the awareness. We're in the schools, as Laura's mentioned before. We're involved in preventative programs within the schools. And our Explorer program, which is teens, involved in career building and just, you know, kind of personality, personality building and strengthening character within that program. As you saw early in the slide, our Explorers are taking on a campaign of no drugs and no gangs. We're very proud of that. And they're taking that message and delivering it out within the school and within the community. We are increasing our drug take-back program, and maybe Tom wants to talk a little bit about the Big Red Box program. Some of our local pharmacists are engaged in. But we have engaged in the DEA program. We also have, of course, within our police department, 24/7 available, a deposit box for prescription drugs if you don't want. Tom, did you want to speak about that at all?
Just real quick comment, maybe a sound bite. Disposal is prevention. Disposal is prevention because it reduces supply. And because disposal reduces the supply, it can contribute to the prevention of addiction and drug-related crimes. So we have the Big Red Med disposal box in several pharmacies that are collecting medications, and many of the police departments are collecting old unwanted medications out, that are taken out of the household medicine cabinet. But an associated point is that an effort needs to be made not to put these medications in the medicine cabinet in the first place, reduce the prescriptions of opioid medications. That's it.
So that is, you know, part of our community outreach and an important part. Another part of our community outreach, which is actually occurring today, is when we do come across a location, and we just did a, we executed a search warrant in connection with the East End Drug Task Force yesterday at 20 Brown Street in Riverside. We are going into the community, and we are interviewing people and passing around this form which we have created. This advises neighbors that we have had some narcotics enforcement action in their neighborhood. It tells them the exact location. It asks them to report any additional activity to us directly, and if they have information about that location that maybe we didn't know about already, to share that information with us. So, you know, we hear from communities about locations. I think it's important for them to know when we've taken action. And I can tell you that yesterday I was in this area, and some of the community members quietly came up to me and said, thank you. So people want to know that if they call and complain about something like that, that action is being taken. These cases take time to build up sometimes, but when they are concluded, we want to make sure people know we appreciate that help and that we're doing everything we can to keep their neighborhoods drug-free. The last piece to speak about is the Good Samaritan law. If you're not familiar with that, the Good Samaritan law essentially says that if you call the police to advise us, or any first responder for that matter, of an individual who is overdosed and is in serious or any kind of medical distress, that if we come and we find product there, that we will not take any law enforcement. Our first mission is to provide first aid to the individual who is overdosing. And we want to make sure that the community is aware of that. We brought that through to some of the youth meetings that we've attended. I think they get that message clearly. We ask that the schools make sure that they push that information out as well. We certainly don't want anybody to feel apprehensive about calling us if they're in the midst of an overdose. So most of these are in place. We're going to continue to follow up a little bit more with that Good Samaritan campaign. But just about everything that I spoke about, as we talked about it, we initiated it, and we see... talked about it, we initiated it, and we see that it's providing some good results, so we're going to keep that all rolling. Any questions?
All right, thank you, Chief. No, you're doing a tremendous job here. I mean, I think some of your approaches to community policing, and problem-oriented policing, is really making a difference, in terms of the communication and our ability to interrupt the supply. I know there's been some significant arrests that you've made, so, I know that's part of the solution. And the Bridge Program, you're getting to the people who are literally, in many ways, most likely to be the next victim of this epidemic, and preventing that, that's, you know, it's like the last chance. But if, you know, if they do take advantage of that, the treatment availabilities, it could really make a difference. Thank you for all you're doing. Tom, thank you as well.
All right, thank you very much, Chief. We're going to call Mark Epley up, and also Alfredo Marat. Alfredo provided some entertainment for us while we were having our candlelight vigil, and got everybody together for that. That was quite a, quite a moment that we had at the candlelight vigil. A number of people in the community were impressed by the number of candles representing individuals that have died from overdoses in Suffolk County, as well as in Southampton Town. So now, Mark Epley, you're going to give us the recovery presentation from the Subcommittee.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and Board Members. Initially, it started out as three committees, and did a kickoff, they created the Subcommittee, and a Recovery Subcommittee, because there's a separation between treatment and recovery. And, so we thought it was appropriate.
Can you explain that a little bit more, though, why recovery stands on its own, why that's important?
Because recovery is a, is all about sustainability. It's all about developing a relationship with people, or a group, to help you live your life. From our standpoint, it's the 12 steps, if you apply this 12 steps, almost any aspect of your life, you can.
In a way, like addiction is, doesn't go away. It's always there.
Never goes away.
It's always there.
And that's why this is an appropriate format, and we're the last committee to actually present here. Because, you know, it's a 12-step program, so most people don't know how to read a meeting list, and go to an AA meeting, NA meeting, what do I do when I get there? What do I say? How do I get a sponsor? How do I develop a home group? How do we take a responsibility? So, you have treatment, it's all the education components, it helps you detox, and physical and social aspects of it, but recovery is really all about long-term.
It's like lifestyle.
It's a lifestyle. And, that's why we call this the Opiate Task Force, and the reality is, that's kind of a failure in the naming of this task force. Because the opiate addiction actually occurred, became an issue, because President Clinton signed into act, the Pain Relief Prevention Act in 1999, which kind of changed the way everybody dealt with pain. The Joint Commission came in, and said, "The hospital organizations, you've got to put us a pain scale in place, and how do you manage pain for people?" Immediately, people started prescribing. That's kind of where we're at right now. But, you know, last year, 64,000 people died from an opiate overdose. 88,000 people died because of medical complications due to alcohol. 480,000 people died last year, because of tobacco-related deaths. Nicotine is a drug. So, this actually needs to be looked at, it's not an opiate task force. This is a task force about addiction. And Kim Laubie said, "It's a five-to-10-year process for your prevention programs to really work." This is a long term.
You could say it's kind of a mental health task force.
Well, it's a mental health task force.
It's an addiction, sort of a mental health issue.
It's a mental health issue. But, the great thing about, we have Representatives from Oasis here. The great thing about the state of New York, is the state of New York has been a real leader, when it comes to improvements with the law, and supporting treatment, and getting people into treatment. And, so we have great leadership at the state level, we have great leadership at Oasis, and so, very fortunate, and there's a lot of states that aren't doing what we're doing here. So, it's a, and just also, so, you know, one alcoholic or drug addict affects, negatively impacts, the lives of 28 people.
Wow.
Everybody in this room, life has been negatively impacted by someone else's alcohol or substance abuse, period. It's the way it is. It's 11% of our population, it's always been 11%, it's always going to be 11%. Less than 1% of the people actually look for treatment. Less than that actually go into 12-step programs. You know, so it's important, what we're doing here, to educate people. It's not about short-term, it's not about turning a corner over opiate deaths, this is about addressing addiction on the East End, addiction in Suffolk County, addiction in North New York State, addiction in America. That's really what this is all about. And it's not short-term, it's long-term. So, that's, and just so you also understand, is AA was created on May 11th, 1935, when the guy, Bill W., went into a doctor's office and saw Dr. Bob, and it was supposed to be a 15-minute conversation that lasted for a long time. And from there, the 12 steps were developed, AA grew, out of a place in Akron, Ohio. And, it's been all shoots of NA, there's Overeaters Anonymous, there's Gamblers Anonymous, there's Cocaine Anonymous, there's Smoking Anonymous, Nicotine Anonymous, on and on and on. People use the principles, the 12 steps, to fight many, many issues. So, I don't know if you wanted to say something, or?
I can definitely jump in. My name's Matt Amlor, I'm the supervisor of Long Island Center for Recovery's outpatient program, Hampton-based. We have a small, routine outpatient program, and a larger inpatient rehabilitation and detox program. I've been working there for approximately seven years. I'm also a person in long-term recovery, and I could speak to all those candles that we saw there at the candlelight vigil, I could speak to the thousands of people I've encountered, over the years, who have battled with addiction, and who have also, I don't like to say overcome, but learned to manage addiction, and live and sustain a recovery. And, you said it, you said that it's a lifestyle, and when we speak of, you know, all these different entities, the task force operates together, and I don't believe that one can do without the other, and we all need to come together, and that's why we created these subcommittees. When we speak about recovery, it is a lifestyle, it is, it is a long-term, long-term thing. It's not, it's not just about getting somebody stabilized, short-term, and getting them treatment, and getting the drugs or alcohol out of their system, it's about giving them the coping skills to live a sufficient life. And, I'll end with this, that, you know, myself included, and the people that I know in long-term recovery, I'd like to think of this as wonderful people, some of the best people that I know here, in our communities, that have good jobs, that have families, that have kids, that are homeowners, that do all the normal things that other people in society do. And we're not to be ousted, and we're not to be condemned to a life of addiction, that there is, there is a life of recovery that is possible. And, we need to, I think, as a task force, as a town, be able to convey that to people, and chip away at that stigma. Because people in recovery are good people, people in addiction are good people, they might be doing some bad things because of the addiction, but it doesn't define them as a person. Thank you.
Quickly, thank you for having me. And, it's been a very learning process, this eight-month, and I'm very grateful, that ultimately, this process for me is part of my recovery. And that's really what it belongs, the bottom line is, I choose to live this way. And I think recovery is forever, and it's day by day. It changed me, over the years. It touched me. And, the death of people for me, should be the birth of anything we do here, as far as, that there is hope, that there is salvation, that there is people out there doing it for nothing, we help each other up, there is no money involved. And I think that we need to publicize that a lot more, that ultimately, you know, the bottom line is, one addict helping another addict is what works. And, not to be, you know, looked at in a scary way, if we say we should go to schools and talk to these children, that 18-year-old kids, who are addicts, are available and ready to talk to other 18-year-olds. And that's what we need to, and I'm hoping, we get to, to the, you know, larger population in the East End, and help each other up. That's what I want.
Thanks. So, we do have some recommendations that came out of this, and we talked a little bit about the difference between treatment and recovery, in developing a awareness campaign for parents, kind of look in the mirror, and the reality is that, if you're drinking and doing drugs, guess what your kids are going to do? That's what they're going to do. So, you know, you've got to look in the mirror yourself. Thrive Recovery Center, which is something that Oasis supported, the development of that, and we had a lot of groups that got together to help start Thrive. I strongly recommend Southampton Town, look at some East End Thrive, it's an incredible place. Expand the youth programs, we talked about, PSAs, and on how to, how to find a meeting, which, you know, you can actually use the town website, to do a link off of that, to access intergroup and AA and NA meetings, and where they're at and stuff, and what different types of meetings are out there, whether they're open, closed, big book meetings, different types of stuff, so.
I would like to add, one thing is, Thrive is wonderful, because it's a melting pot, the possibility to have multiple meetings occurring, and then cross-pollinating each other, as there are going to be, you know, events and anniversaries, then one person can relate to someone else from another group, and suddenly realize, "Oh my God, I didn't think..." So, really, this Thrive Center was enlightening, and very, very important to me.
It's, it's a fantastic place, it really, really is, so. Unless it's Suffolk County Community College, advocate careers for certified recovery coaches, and sober companions, and they have a great CASAC program over there, that LICR, Seafield, and Alternatives all work with them, to do internships, which is a great place. Sober housing, talked about sober housing briefly on this, and to tell you, it's a, it's a difficult subject. Because sober housing, is a Supreme Court ruling on that, City of Edmonds, Washington, against Oxford House. And basically, the Supreme Court ruling says that individuals living together for the purpose of remaining sober, classified as a single-family. So, every place in the town where you have single-family zoning, a sober house can be placed in. The issues with sober housing is, the sober houses, some operators overcrowd them. You operate a sober house correctly, and you get your payment through Suffolk County DSS, which they pay you $475 a month for room and board, you're never going to, you don't even cover your mortgage and your taxes around here. And that's a, those are, that's a rate from 1972, from OTDA, that they haven't increased at all, and it's, it's the major problem. And, and so.
The county gets their money from the state, so it's a pass-through?
Yes.
So, it's, again, it's back to the state level, increasing the funding for housing.
And on the other side, you would have operators who still would go through, and crowd homes, and put people down in basements, and up in attics, and bunk bed everybody out, and, and they, they actually end up making more money. So, it's a, it's a very slippery slope. It's, sober housing is something that the state looked at years ago, to go in and regulate, create regulations around that, Oasis did. We actually gave them all, Seafields operating, when they toured our sites, and it came back and chose not to move forward, because of something, the Supreme Court ruling, and some rulings that occurred down in Florida. So, you know, you have, I operate 15 recovery houses across Long Island, in different towns, we have to get rental permits, we open them up for inspections, it's the same process. So, you have a rental law in place, enforce the rental law, and, because they are single-family residents, that the property owner, probably for the most part, doesn't live on site.
The state could do the same regulations they do with the community residential facilities and the hygiene law. The Patavam Homes, essentially, as they're known as.
They could do that, yes.
Yeah, that would be, that would provide a much better baseline and guidance.
It, yeah, it would, it would, it would. But the, so it's, it's a, it's, they could do that, I mean, they have a lot more protection. So, I mean, you know, for us to try to, to get regulations around sober house, then you have to meet a lot of ADA requirements around stuff, you have to meet zoning regulations, get local government units, there's so many complications, that what the Patavam Home would work well for everybody, so.
Yeah.
And then, so, you know, just trying to, try to help, because you're, let's say, you're someone who comes out of a treatment program, and then you go into, then you go back into the same environment that you left, either eight, 14, 30, 90, how many days, and you're going back to the same environment. Because this is truly, it's a family illness, the entire piece, so a lot of family members have got to get involved, Valenon, Alteen, okay, those are important, go to treatment, educate yourself, understand the disease, and the impact that they've had on you, and, and that's why sober housing is also important. If you run right, it can actually, somebody can go to a safe, sober environment, develop good habits around the 12 steps, and continue with outpatient treatment, so. That's pretty much our Recovery Subcommittee, was asked to look at the current barriers to treatment, and, and, you know, it says, you know, people, why people are afraid to go into inpatient, sometimes they don't want to leave families, or leave a job, so, you know, the Americans with Disability Act actually protects people seeking treatment. So, but sometimes financially, it's just very difficult, there's childcare issues, all of that. Sometimes they're so, you know, waitless, to try to get into inpatient treatment programs, or, and the way I always look at it, is you basically have a 24-hour window, to try to get someone into treatment. So, once somebody's decided, "Hey, I think I want to try this," you have 24 hours. And, and so, inpatient services, say, range eight to 10 days before the insurance runs out, you know, what, the new laws, you get a minimum of five days for a detox, and a minimum of 14 days for inpatient treatment, that's what New York State put in place. That's, it's all based upon a level of care determiner, and it's a locator, that Oasis has put in place, so, someone goes and has an assessment done, using, utilizing the Oasis tool, it protects the individual seeking treatment, protects the treatment program, and kind of guarantees them a minimum stay, is based upon, is continued stay, that, to try to keep people in treatment for longer. So, it's, it's just really about developing treatment plans, and helping people set up short and long-term goals for themselves. So, like I said, Oasis and New York State have done some phenomenal work, especially over the last, you know, four or five years, and, so, treatment pads, availability on the East End, you know, Seafield, like 100 beds in Seafield, you guys at LICR have 50 beds, so, you know, I see more frequent availability, LICR has occasional availability, Eastern Long Island Hospital, which also has, in Quantico, has an inpatient, but they also have a detox too, has kind of a limited ability over there, availability. So, it's, so it's a challenge, especially with the demand, especially in the summertime, to try to get people into treatment, so. And, some solutions here, funds for alternatives to childcare while in treatment, is the ability to do that, help people out with that, and need outpatient services too. So, but things that we really want to drive home. So, but things that we really want to drive home, you know, is ask for state funding, especially for a thrive on the East End, and can't, if we could get something like that, that's a home run, it's a home run. It's something that this town board could actually do in space that you already own, that could be something that Oasis can get state funding for potentially, you know, they're looking at these different units, facilities across the state, and it's private funding too, there's other organizations that would step up, I'm sure.
The nearest Oasis facility to us is that, the one in Mauritius?
Hoppak.
In Hoppak?
Oasis?
Yeah.
Thrive.
No, no, but I was thinking.
Thrive, in Hoppak.
What about Oasis, there's a facility in Mauritius, I pass that all the time.
No, it's, Oasis operates CK Post, which is up in the Long Island area, that's their inpatient treatment program. You know, methadone programs are actually run by Suffolk County, and Suffolk County don't have private methadone, that's in Riverhead, the closest one there. There's a variety of treatment, outpatient treatment programs on East End.
And that's one of the things that's hard to really sort of visualize, because there's a lot of different parts here.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I sent to Connie, defining the different levels of care, defining listing programs with phone numbers at these different levels of care, and then also don't underestimate the private physician, who actually has buprenorphine and he's the ability to prescribe in his office and stuff, he can do that, there's a lot of different East End providers that do that, and they work with, you know, private therapists and also treatment programs that do the psychosocial component to recovery. But I think, but I thank you guys for doing this, and I thank Drew and the entire O.P. Task Force and for all the work they've done, so.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark, Matt, and thank you Alfredo for your hard work. Now we have a question and answer period, and we have our Oasis representatives, Manuel and Oscar. Do you, would you prefer answering questions from the audience, or would you want to come up front? What would you prefer?
Please come up.
Please. This is the time. Manuel Mascara, who's chief of the regional downstate office of Oasis, and Oscar Rivera, who's with our Long Island Regional Office.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for coming out today.
I'm glad to. I just want to make a few comments, and let me start off with some, reiterating some of the comments previously made. God forbid, we're all leaving here, we fall down a flight of stairs, we all break a leg, we go to ten different hospitals, each doctor knows how to fix a broken leg. One may be a woman, one may be a male, but it's basically the same treatment. You heard a comment before that when you're dealing with drugs, it's person-centered. There is no one fix for everybody, which is what makes dealing with the drug epidemic as horrendous as it is. If you have ten people, you have to find which method works for those ten, multiply it by a thousand, multiply it by a million, you get a sense of what we're up against. I've been hearing about the different workgroups, and I'm happy to say they're great, because in our world, our speak would be, it's the continuing of care. You have the prevention piece, you have the treatment, you have the recovery. We tend to shy away from the law enforcement, because it has a negative tone when we're dealing with our patients, but the prevention, treatment and recovery is the whole from start to finish, and law enforcement can't be ignored. So I applaud both the town and all the previous workgroups that came up. What I would like to also say is that the drug problem is not a town problem, it's not a county problem, it's not a state problem, it's much bigger than all of us. So it was a little heartbreaking for me to sit out there and listen to how everybody's struggling to come up with an answer, where there's a lot of other people working on the same thing. So I heard about campaigns, et cetera. Guess what, Oasis has an extensive array of materials geared towards high schools, middle schools, parents, where we teach parents what to look for, what they should be alert for, et cetera. I want to make one thing clear, at the end of this, I would like to leave my business card with someone, and I would like to extend an invite to the various workgroups, if they would like to perhaps visit either our Long Island Regional Office or our New York City Office, and I could amass the various key plagias from the different areas, because what I would like to do is have you folks not reinvent the wheel. I also heard, not to be dismissive of anybody, but I heard reference made to you must fail twice rule. She was right, except Oasis, through legal legislation, was able to reverse that, so that no longer applies. So I would like at least the members of the workgroup to know what is the latest. I heard a lot about various initiatives, your chief of police spoke about bridging the gap, well, different term, but in our lingo, we have peer engagement specialists, where we're trying to actually actively, real-time, if we hear of a knock-hand reversal, have a peer engagement specialist meet that person at the hospital. He is a person who is either in recovery or is long past recovery, but knows what it's going through. It's hard for a cop or someone else in authority to speak to somebody at that point in time, whereas if you have their peer there, it's a different story. So my point is Oasis is working on a lot of things that either dovetail and hands or far exceed what you would like to do. Oscar was, brought some documents that we would like to leave again, I apologize, we only have one or two copies of them.
No, actually I have, you know.
Yeah, okay, perfect. But just for example, right now Oasis is working on regional addiction resource centers based around community coalition, which is a phrase you heard earlier from one of your workgroups. We're creating open access centers to ensure that anyone in need of substance use disorder has immediate access to addiction treatment services 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Hospital diversion wraparound services, again legislative initiatives targeted to assist individuals not meeting the admission criteria for hospital-based detox services. We're creating prevention resource centers. These provide support to local communities, counties, prevention providers to establish and assist community coalition development efforts, which is basically what I think this town is trying to do. There's also recently state-targeted response, STR grants. These are special grants for county zoning, but obviously you're in Suffolk County, so Suffolk could certainly qualify, to expand critical initiatives in New York's ongoing efforts to confront the opioid epidemic. It's being, the grants are being used to add and enhance treatment services for people struggling with use disorders, and for targeting high-knee counties. There's the peer engagement specialists, Family Support Navigator, again, a new service where we try to help people and their families, because as you've heard, we don't have to treat just the drug addict, we have to treat the family. So we have the Family Support Navigator. We've created youth clubhouses, which is similar to what I've heard before in terms of places that young people can go to. Again, there's a lot of initiatives going on, I think it would be worthwhile for the members of the various workgroups to at least know what is out there, what is coming out, and how to piggyback onto those. The other thing I would like to comment to, and again, no disrespect intended, it seems to me that this is being viewed again as a Southampton problem, it's not. And sometimes the best solution for some of the people we're trying to help is not to keep them in the community. For example, a sober house sounds great on the surface, we had horrible experience with sober houses and three-quarter houses in New York City. Less than scrupulous providers would open up treatment centers, and part of the requirement was, if you want that treatment, you have to stay in our quarter houses. So yes, they weren't making much money on the subsidies for the quarter houses, but they were milking the treatment, so here's a person who maybe only needed to go for outpatient services twice a week, he was required to go every day, they were billed for every day, et cetera. So while the sober house, I'm not knocking it, has to be done the right way. Also, as was mentioned before, it's great if you have a sober house in your community, but now you're in a sober home environment, you leave there to go to work. If you stay in the same community, maybe you got hooked on drugs because you worked in a restaurant and somebody got you hooked, well, being in the sober home is only half the fix if you're still working in the same community. I speak from experience, I have a niece, drug addicted, living in the streets, got pregnant in. Their family did not listen to me, they wanted her close to home. She tried three different treatment centers, all close to home, all in Nassau County, one in Suffolk County, and guess what? I found out that she was going to treatment services with the guy that had been supplying her the drugs. Why? Because when he got caught, the judge gave him a deal, either go to rehab services or we lock you up. So what does he do? I'll go to rehab. So great, so now my niece is going to a rehab center with the same guy that got her hooked. Finally, I was able to talk her family into shipping her up to Poughkeepsie. Didn't know anybody, went into treatment for the time being, knock on wood, she's back home, and she seems to be clean. So I caution people about trying to perhaps be too inclusive in terms of keeping some of your people here. The other thing too is again, the three phases or the four phases, think of it as a marathon run where you're passing on the baton, you never really finish, so when one finally passes off, the person, the next run or the next segment of that run begins. There's also a lot of reference being made to the 12-step AA, et cetera. Again, please remember, it's person-specific. We have certain opioid treatment programs throughout the state. Basically, people go there on a daily basis, once a week depending on their need, and they get their fix of knock-hand, buprenorphine, sorry, you never pronounce it, but there are some people that basically get tapered down, but will always be on some sort of medication in a controlled environment. Some of these people have been living like that very productively for 30 years. I actually have seen people 60, 65 years old, showing up every morning, getting their fix early in the morning, in liquid form, in a controlled environment, and they go to work. They live very, very healthy, productive lives. They have families, they have jobs, et cetera. So I also want to make sure that we remove the stigma, because that's another thing that Oasis has done. We have some excellent videos where we talk about reversing the stigma. We also recently came up with a video that talks about there is life, and it emphasizes recovery, because most of the drug commercials you see tend to be very negative-focused, et cetera. We are using a different approach, we're stressing that, hey, it can happen, you can get cleaned up. So again, I will gladly answer any questions, but I just wanted to openly say, there's a lot that is happening that you or your folks may not be aware of. I would love the opportunity to again, host a sit-down with all of the various department heads within Oasis, from legal, so you know what we're doing, prevention, everything and anything is on the table.
Thank you for coming down, it's very helpful, and, you know, this is not the end, this is in many ways the beginning, we put together a lot of good recommendations, this is in draft form, the board's gonna have to consider it. As we get to what the next phase, which will be some sort of implementation phase, I think it's very important that we are meeting with Oasis and not replicating services that are already done. We have limited financial resources and people resources, and if there's money that is out there and work that is being done and available, we need to know about that, so. But I appreciate it, if the town board has any questions, I do want to, you know, we're a little bit behind the schedule that we had allotted, so if there's no other questions, thank you though.
I like the experience that you bring, and we certainly should continue this, I mean, you all have a knowledge of this and some of these recommendations that we would like to hear.
And again, I just stress, it's not a town problem, it's beyond the town, and anything that we can do to partner up with you folks, we are more than happy to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna kick it back to Drew to close this, and.
Yes, once again, that concludes our draft report presentation, and we appreciate the privilege of serving here for the last eight months, and we had some wonderful experiences, and it was good therapeutic medicine for a lot of us, and we learned a lot, so we thank you for that.
So I guess the big question is what next? So, you know, this was what the opioid task force was assembled to do, to deliver these recommendations, which are in draft form at the moment. I think the town board is gonna have to figure out what to do, whether the task force needs to continue on in some fashion, maybe on a bi-yearly, I don't really know, quarterly, or maybe continue with some of the chairs of the various subcommittees, meeting monthly, whatever it might be, I don't really know. And we have to discuss as a board what we're gonna do with all these recommendations, which ones are town-specific, and which ones we don't have control over, but maybe we could advocate to other organizations. Drew, thank you so much, we're not letting you go completely, because we need you to stay involved in this issue, and so, but thank you, and Connie, for all the work that you've done, all the members of the task forces in the community who gave of your time to get to this point, thank you so much. Again, this is an ongoing effort. So just like we talked about recovery being a life's work, we're gonna have to keep the work going here in some capacity, so that just because the numbers are encouraging in terms of opioid deaths, doesn't mean we get to rest. We're gonna have to continue to be on this issue and working hard to prevent additional deaths, so, thank you all.
Thank you.
To all of you members who helped, thank you. All right, why don't we take a three-minute recess, everybody stretch, get your blood flowing, we're gonna bring, I'll bring, I guess, Becky Genia in. Okay, let's continue with our work session, apologies for the delay, I know that a number of you have come to approach the board about issues regarding Native American graves, burial site protection. Becky Genia, from the Chinacock Indian Nation, is going to, Becky, how are you? Come forward.
I'm fine, thank you.
You want to speak from there or from the table?
Uh...
Come up to the table. This is fine, wherever you prefer.
I'll just hold here for now.
All right.
And I have, what I have for you.
Becky, what is you, what is your title with the nation?
Chinacock Archaeological Advisory Committee, and Intertribal Historic Preservation Task Force, and official representative for the Native American Graves Protection and Repatriation Act.
Okay.
I only have three of these, but please.
You can share.
If you all could just.
You guys want to share?
So as you know, this is our Graves Protection Committee, some of the members here, Chief Harry Wallace from the Unkutshog Nation, that's Louis Capi, Jennifer Puppi-Wilson, Denise Silva-Dennis, and that, this is some of our Graves Protection people. So and of course, you know Elizabeth Hale, she passed away a couple of years ago, we've been to many, many board meetings here, and so, since 2003, I think the first thing we have to ask, Jay, is, on the county level, were there any bills protecting graves, unmarked burial site protection act, was that ever passed on the county level?
So what, we did pass that years ago. That was a...
I think it got caught in the muck in the mire somewhere.
14 or 15 years ago, I remember you brought, we worked together on something.
We did, I don't...
I thought it did pass, we'll have to look it up.
Okay, because if it did, it would have helped a lot over these past 15 years, and we've had basically no help, we've been on our own. In the watermill, the St. James area site, we did everything on our own, and Shelter Island, we did everything on our own, in Indian Island, we did everything on our own. And so, what we're here for today is to remind the town board that since 2003, we've had a draft legislation for graves protection, colonial and Native American graves protection, presented to this board. We're on our fourth supervisor, it was Scapini, then it was Linda Cabot, then it was Anna Throneholt, and now it's you. and now it's you. And each time we've come, we've presented just what we're doing today, and we were told that it was in the hands of the town attorney, town attorneys have to look at it, and we have not really gotten too much anywhere.
So tell us about the law and what it does.
Okay.
And I, by the way, I just took the opportunity to text legislator Fleming to see if the act had passed at the county, and I don't know if I'll get an answer, but I tried to.
I can see if I can look it up online.
Okay.
But I wanna pay attention.
It didn't go very far with Bridget Fleming. I pretty much know that, but it was on a town level, that's for sure.
I gotta, we'll see if I can find out.
So we have a checklist here, building permit endorsement, initial excavation notification, human remains and burial site on earth, notify chief, medical examiner, and the Chinacock Nation, or actually, the NAGPRTU can put in there, positive report, negative report, proceeds ends, notify landowner, lineal descendants and cultural affiliate group, conduct phase one, two, or three archaeological investigation, meet with landowner, leave burial site undisturbed, relocate on property, repatriate, memorialize, covenants, open space recommendation, add known burial sites, add recently discovered burial sites, and the SHIPA registration or the NIPA registration, that's all the historic preservation acronyms. So in a nutshell, that's what it does. It explains from soup to nuts what can be done if accidentally unearthing. And this has to go for private property, because that's where we're at. Private property, the owner's rights come over any disturbance of or desecration of our ancient burials. That's the biggest problem that we have right now.
You're saying the owner's rights are over yours, is that presently, and you're looking at?
Yes, over the rights of the desecration of the grave. So, and another letter in your packet is to the supervisor dated in 2008. It has been three years since we received our draft, our local law on Native American and colonial graves protection. For your consideration and further discussion, in the past three years, many archaeologically sensitive areas have been destroyed, and the ones that concern us the most of the time is the unearthing of ancestors' graves and watermill on the Connor property. So, and like I said, we took care of that, and we basically, we did it on our own. We got the CPF fund after a couple of years of going back and forth for at least three years. The Community Preservation Fund, I think Mary Wilson still was, she was the director at the time, preserved that property. So it can be done, but what we're trying to do is prevent the desecration in the first place. We were told to produce this map for sensitive areas. We worked on that at least a solid year, a dozen or more people when my aunt Elizabeth Hale was still alive. And that was all completed, handed in to, when Anna Throneholt was here, we went to get it for one of the meetings, and no one could find the map. They looked high and low in this building.
You have copies of it?
We didn't have any, because we handed it over to the people who asked us to do it in the first place, and that map disappeared off the face of the earth.
So that was based on excavations, so archaeological excavations, as well as oral history anecdote?
Mostly. There was, there were at least five points in that, and to my recollection, I can't remember...
Field reconnaissance and things like that?
Yeah.
When I was with East Hampton, we produced a certain map of known sites, we reviewed all the historical records, conducted interviews, and a map was produced. And there was some procedures that were established that home foundation excavations and swimming pools and things like that, that were being done in certain proximity to these known sites had to go through, might have been a stage one archaeology or whatever it might have been, or a field, you know...
That's typically part of the secret process also.
So Southampton doesn't have anything like that?
Secret, well, we know how that goes. It all depends on, you know, the phase one, two, or three. So if it goes, if it gets past the phase one, and then it always comes to money, they say. You know, if the landowner doesn't really want to pay for the archaeological report, then, and we've had this problem with Joanne, what's her name?
The Claim?
Yes, in the past, many times, that the town owes her money for things that she's done and never gotten paid for. It always gets really sticky there.
I think she's the anthropologist who, I believe she produced a map for East Hampton. She was hired to help evaluate, do a town-wide assessment of cultural resources, historical resources.
Well, maybe if you called her and she's, you know...
Well, we could look at what East Hampton has done on this issue.
Excuse me?
We could certainly look at the way East Hampton approached the issue.
Well, I wish you would, because they, I think, I believe that they have something in place that is something worth looking at.
And I could certainly, I'm not able to get onto the county's website and have it search for me to see whether that bill had passed or not. My recollection is it did, but it's possible that the county isn't doing anything to enforce it. So I can get back to you on that when I'm able to sit in front of a real computer and search that.
That's really good, because what I wanted to do today is to just establish a regular meeting. We would like to see you at least four times a year, and to keep up with this, because it's been years, we lost a couple of, you know, of our graves protection warriors. They're in the spirit world, we have to, you know, dust ourselves off and get back on track again. There's a ton of work to do, a lot of work to do. So what we're doing here is establishing ourselves again with the town, so that we can get some work done. And with that, I would like to ask if Chief Harry Wallace will speak for, to this issue next, and I thank you for your time.
Do we have, before you sit, Becky, do we have a committee that is established for relationships between the Chinacock Nation and the town? Do we have any systems in place?
No, we asked, probably for the last, before, that was one of Anna Throneholt's things that she was gonna be working on, and she's come and gone. So as far as I know, no.
Right. I mean, I have gone, I've even recently met with the tribal council there. I've tried to establish strong relationships with the nation, and we've had good dialogue, and we've had a lot of issues, frankly, that we've had to work together on. You know, to have a committee of some sort, a standing committee with, you know, tribal relationships, town tribal relationships, probably is a good idea. Whether we'd meet twice a year or something like that, I don't know.
I don't either, but we'd like to stay focused on graves protection. We don't wanna get mixed up with any of the tribal, you know?
Right. But it could be a subsection of that committee, because it is related.
Yeah, of course it is, but in order for us to accomplish certain things, we have to kinda keep it separate.
You wanna stay focused on?
Yeah, we need to stay focused on this. There's a thousand things to do.
Jim, what is, we have something on, we have a cemetery committee, don't we?
I believe so. I know Sunday's very long.
You've got some pretty good information, chapter 189. You also have the inventory map, which is critical assessed areas by cultural resources, subcommittee to the town landmarks. So if that...
Maybe it could be, yeah, it could be connected to the town landmarks, that we have a cemetery committee.
I just wanna tell you right now while I'm here, and I'm gonna take this opportunity to do this, because in order for us to keep focused like we were just talking about on graves protection, this is, this is a three-page document that I put together talking to the tribal members on Chinacock about what's going on. We, we're in dire straits over there. 180 cesspools in dire need of upgrading, nitro leaking pollution, polluting the ground, establishment of a tribal police department being withheld, causing more crime, contamination of water and land, no one to report this to, numerous arsons that are unsolved, drug traffic, sales, distribution of fentanyl-laced drugs, three fatal overdoses, a fraudulent SAM program, which is substance abuse mobilization program, no help for the addicts, federal funds misappropriated, tribal unemployment, confidential medical information being leaked, no animal control and animal cruelty, high-speed chases, no traffic vehicle laws causing unsafe roadways, corruption of tribal officials, collusion with drug traffic activity on reservation territory, threats made to tribal officials, forfeiture of tribal gaming opportunity, constant misinformation to general council members on all levels, hiring practice of favoritism and nepotism, failure to honestly report to grantors, tribal neglect of participation in educational decisions with Southampton, trustees withholding assistance to youth programs, jeopardizing standing nation, New York State Police by aiding and vetting criminals, unclear determination of Southampton Village and Town Police presence on reservation, bias allotting of tribal land, ignoring the destitute of the tribe, houses in crisis condition ignored and unaddressed, dismissing the decisions of majority votes by general counsel, failure to deliver promises made when becoming federally recognized, such as land claims, police department, public safety, Bay Constable, fraudulent representative of tribal attorney, renting to non-tribal members with no ties to Chinacock, procrastination of gated community, poorly maintained roads that cause accidents and vehicle damage, program directors lacking accountability and regulation, shameful amounts of garbage being discarded throughout the reservation in West Woods, donated vehicles for tribal law enforcement, vehicles worth thousands of dollars lay dormant and desolate in the parking lots of the reservation, encroachment on tribal lands and waters, non-tribal people stealing our oysters, clams, and other agricultural resources. So that's why I'm saying, we have to stay...
Yeah, because I mean, it's a very long list. You have a democratically-elected tribal council, do you not? And I just wanna make sure, today you're speaking as a representative of the Chinacock Nation or as an individual?
I am on the Chinacock Archaeological Advisory Committee, the Intertribal, so I don't know what you're asking.
I just wanna know if this is, your position today, is it an official position of the Chinacock Nation? Or is it an individual position?
I am an official representative of the Chinacock Archaeological Advisory Committee, and I'm no stranger. Maybe to you, well, because I predate, I don't, I don't really remember anybody's face, except for you, when you were in the county.
Sure.
But this, we're talking about Chris Nuzzi, and the one that went to jail, and the other one, you know, I know all of them. That this is, this is 2003?
Becky, you and I go back a long time.
Yeah.
And I, obviously, I know you, I just wanna make sure if we're going to, like, and these are important issues you're bringing forth.
Right.
About the preservation of burials.
Right.
Respecting the, you know, these individuals. I just wanna make sure that this is, since we're dealing with a separate government, this is a nation, Chinacock Nation.
Would you like a letter from the tribal council, that I am allowed to speak to you about protecting?
No, but as we move forward, yeah, some confirmation from the tribal council, so that we don't end up at odds with them saying, oh, this is not what we're looking for, that, Becky, you know, I don't wanna run into that situation. So I just wanna make sure you're speaking on behalf of the nation.
And I have been since 2003.
Okay.
And it's in black and white, right?
Okay, okay, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Denise, or, yeah, sir?
Greetings, my friends, relatives. My name is Harry Wallace, I'm the elected chief of the Unka Chog Indian Nation. It's from Mastick, not in the town of Southampton, the town of Brookhaven, but I have been a member of the Intertribal Historic Preservation Task Force since its inception in 2003, and I'm also a member of the federal, state tribal courts and justice nation, and Indian Justice Nations Task Force, which was established about 11 years ago, and I am the co-chairman of the Graves Protection Committee.
Is Unka Chog, is that different than Puspa Tak? Is it different?
Puspa Tak is the place, Unka Chog is the name of the people.
Okay.
So it's Unka Chog Nation, Puspa Tak Territory Reservation.
Thank you.
So, but it is the, we are the same people. So I'm here to, I've been involved with this process for, since its inception, and I'm familiar with a lot of the things that Becky spoke to you about, and this is why I wanted to stay focused on this particular issue of graves protection. And the answer to the county attorney's question about, well, you know, what laws, what information has been placed, or how does, you know, the laws regarding the protection of sites and what needs to be done when you have, when you discover some, inadvertently discover anything. New York is one of four states that doesn't have any protections on private land. We did a, we did a summary, I don't know if you, if this summary was included in your packet there, Becky? Okay, I would like to give this to you, the only copy I got, so if you can make a copy of it. But in essence, it says state simply, New York is one of four states that doesn't have a protection for inadvertent discoveries on private lands. It does on public lands, as a result, Indian Island and those places where public lands are controlled by the state or county, there are certain protect, there are protections that trigger. And one of those is, of course, the shipos protection for any, you know, unmarked burials and human remains and artifacts. If it's on private land, there is no mandate that the, that digging cease. It's only, it's based upon, and Shelter Island educates us to that fact, it's based upon the goodwill or the lack thereof of the homeowner. And what we're telling you now is that the time for homeowner to be responsible for whether or not they decide to overturn and dig up, desecrate graves, that time has to stop. And we need to take the necessary steps to protect these unmarked burials, because every time we put a shovel in the ground today, chances are we're gonna find something. So we're in the process of submitting state legislation that's pending. We've got the, I believe Assemblyman Engelbreit has a law that's been pending. We're looking at the Judiciary Committee to go and see if they can make some amendments to that law and make it a mandated requirement, also make it a felony to desecrate human But in the interim, there is ways that towns and counties and villages can take steps to protect those in its jurisdiction to, when you have an inadvertent, and we're talking about inadvertent discoveries. The map is a good thing. You know those sites, you would take, you would take measures to protect those, but these are inadvertent discoveries. Once you have an inadvertent discovery, the procedure is as follows. The, the, what's this, what's the...
Like an injunction?
No, 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 the, the human examiner, the medical examiner's office has called in. He makes a determination as to whether or not it's a homicide, whether or not it's a recent body or not. If it's over a certain number of years, then that's all they do, they stop, and they do nothing else. Then it's, then what takes place is either, the medical examiner of Suffolk County is aware of the fact that if it's a ancient remain, they either, they call us. But that's not a mandate, that is only on the good graces of his office and the work that we've done together. We've done maybe five, I've done personally, five reburials. Now, I'm not in the business of reburying, but that's what we have to do, is that we have to rebury these remains once they're uncovered and determined. So our medical examiner has been cooperating with us in Suffolk County, but there is no mandate, and the town has no mandate, and I don't believe that law was passed, because I was kind of involved with that from the outset, as long as with Shelter Islands, they didn't pass a law, they passed a policy recommendation. And so, the town of Southampton was considering that, considering a town law, and as far as I could tell, I don't think anything was passed.
Yeah, I'm looking, I'm just having...
Right. So I would be very much interested in doing that, and what was, in finding that out, because what is simply is involved is just, you know, if you have procedures to protect things that are endangered, then it's a no-brainer to say that if you have an inadvertent discovery of an ancient remain, regardless of whether it's native or non-native, I mean, I'm not asking you to actually create somebody else's graves, it's, it's just logical to assume that if you have laws in place to protect things that are endangered... to protect things that are endangered, you should, there are laws in place that need to be, protect things that are sacred. And this is a sacred thing. It's sacred to you, it's sacred to us. To me, it's a no-brainer. And what be able to do is have, in the absence of state legislation, and we know how difficult it is to do that, and we are actively pursuing state regulation on that. In the absence of that, the town can take some measures to do what's right on its own. And one of those measures is to protect and safeguard those things when they're inadvertently discovered. Set up a procedure in place. We know how to do this. We do it all the time. And we'll help you. We'll help you design those things and deal with those things that may pose a problem. Of course, the homeowner, he doesn't want, landlord doesn't want you involved in anything that he does, but you deal with that every day. All right, so, but there are certain things that you need to do, and he needs to do, and he needs to respect those things. And we know land is valuable, we know the price that you have for that. But our, you know, our sacred items are as valuable as anything that you build.
Absolutely.
So we need you to recognize that and take action to move forward.
Any requirement that someone constructing a home, if they encounter human remains, they have to stop, by the way, right?
Yeah, I mean, I would-
There is no requirement, there is no mandated requirement to do that.
I was under the impression that certainly you would have to, absolutely. But you, we can talk further too, this side.
Certainly.
Yeah, but, yeah, because as you said, other environmental studies, if you come across a tiger salamander, everything stops, you know. So obviously, we should be doing it.
Exactly, so you need to mandate that, because right now, it's voluntary. Like I said, once you discover human remains, the medical examiner's office comes into play to make a determination if it's a homicide. And once he makes that determination that it's not, that it's an ancient remain, the inquiry as far as the medical examiner's office is concerned is-
But that's the end of the process, Charlie?
That's the end of the process on private land, absolutely. When it's public land, it's a different story. There is a whole procedure. You can use that as your model for making a determination.
It should apply to both, obviously.
It should apply to both, but it doesn't.
So now, if it's a, if the ME, medical examiner determines it's not a homicide, it's a natural death, it could fall-
Well, it's an ancient remain, human remain.
Right, it could fall into a number of different categories. It could be Native American, it could be colonial, right? It could be, it could be a burial site. It could be someone just died in the woods at some point in the location. So then, so somebody would have to make a determination whether this was a burial area, whether it was an individual, right?
Right, so that should be the inquiry. What happens with us, and there is a federal, there is a state law, I use Florida, Florida's state law as a model, because it is probably the best model that we have that deals with not only rural areas, but Florida has some major metropolitan areas as well, right? So it has big cities, it's 20, there are millions of people in the state, they deal with this issue, and their law is probably one of the best there was that we could use as a model in Florida. State Department, fortunately, they have a state archaeological department that handles this. We don't have that.
I know there's equipment, because we used it out in East Hampton to identify burials, and see if something's actually a graveyard, without disturbing the site.
It's called ground penetrating, it's called ground penetrating equipment. It's radar that they use.
And it's not that expensive, I mean, it seems like-
Not expensive.
The first thing, if you did encounter human remains and you were concerned that there were more extensive remains right before doing additional damage, that you'd conduct that kind of review would make good sense. If it turns out to be just this soul, an individual, I guess, reinterment? I guess it might be a number of-
There's a number of options, depending upon whether you have an individual, or single, or small number of burials as opposed to a mass burial site. There are a number of options that are available. And since 1980, when the Native American Graves Repatriation Act was instituted, there's numbers of procedures. We can use the history of how things have been handled based upon that act's existence for the last 38 years to use a way in which we can handle matters. And like I said, we've already handled a number of repatriations. And when there's an individual, it's type of situation there, and we can find a suitable reburial, we look to do that. Where it's not suitable, you look to mark a site and not interfere. So there are ways in which we can deal with those that answers the questions or objections of the homeowner and deals with the way that we want to have our sacred sites protected. And so, we think that the town is in a very special position because it can enact and require a simple procedure to protect these inadvertent discoveries and not prohibit the homeowner's rights to do that.
I think it has to be reasonable, my fear, and not that-
Your fear is well-taken.
You know what my fear is, right?
I know what it is.
That a developer, not, you know, developers are good people, you know, but that if we make the process too onerous, that they're not going to tell us. They just, they simply pretend they never saw it. And so we have to make sure-
But that's what's been happening.
Right, so we have, right, so we want to make sure that that doesn't happen. So when they do encounter human remains, that they go through a process, and it's a process that's designed to protect the sanctity of the individual.
Okay, but there are remedies for that, all right? If you, if you dig up wetlands, don't you have a remedy for that?
Yes, yeah, that's what I-
Okay, so if you dig up a place where there are certain fish that are protected, or certain trees that are protected, don't you have a remedy? And it includes, you know, potential criminal prosecution, right? Or potential violation or withdrawal of your permit? There are penalties for all of this misbehavior. Now, we don't, we want people to do the right thing, but when they don't, there's a consequence to misbehavior. And that's all they're saying to you. And there's a reasonable consequence to misbehavior that doesn't jeopardize the homeowner's property rights, but it protects the sacred sites.
Right, no, exactly, that's what I'm saying, is that-
Yes.
Having the right process. You said Florida had a good-
Florida's got a great statute. And I have a copy of it here, I could give it to you?
Could you provide us a-
Absolutely. And I've been working with them, because they're very good at-
If you could give us a few of the points about-
That's a state statute, but you could model that for yourself.
What we have on the books now, I'll, you know, after, when I get a chance, I'll take a look to see what happened to that county law.
Chief Wallace?
Yes.
How are you?
I'm fine.
We know each other from the Center of Riches School District. I just retired from one of two schools.
I was looking at you over there, kind of, while you're there. How are you, sir?
Yeah, I'm good, thanks. One of two schools that actually have Native American reservations, Southampton being one, Center of Riches being the other.
I'm going to be teaching the language at the school district next week, Fall, by the way.
It was great.
Pretty cool, bud.
Does the state legislative session convene yesterday? Do you know if the bill from Assemblyman Engelbreit got out of committee?
I don't think so, because it's a two-year timeframe that they do, and I think this year, we didn't make it in time.
Okay, my other question-
I don't think it was introduced, Engelbreit has introduced, let me just back up a little bit. Engelbreit has introduced this piece of legislation for the last 10 years.
Right, that's why I asked him about it.
So he just keeps trying to make it happen, right? And we're trying to build up enough political support and energy through the task force to support that bill.
Do you know if there are other townships in the state of New York? The Puspatuk Reservation is located in Brookhaven. Do they have laws that you propose?
Well, we're doing the same thing to them as we're doing you.
Well, yeah, it's appropriate. Also, they're-
It's all part of the same process.
We have extensive Native American burial grounds all throughout the state of New York. And if, and of course, yes, I'm thinking of the-
Upstate New York, over in Verona, Verona, Oneida, I would say Gondangin, which is between Rochester and Syracuse. There's extensive burial sites that-
And I know you all have a network, and if you could get us copies of that local code in those counties or in those towns, I would love to look at it as well, so.
Sure, but I would suggest that we, well, we'll dig up everything that we can to support your inquiry. But my feeling, based upon the work that I have done, is that you look at that Florida statute-
I remembered my own example as well.
It triggers right into cemetery law. It goes right into the cemetery law. So it adds an element to the cemetery law, which everybody has. And it just amends the cemetery law to include inadvertent discoveries of human remains. And it just says, we contact, if it's a native remain, we contact Chinatown, Unkachag, whichever state or any recognized, it could be Montauk's. We don't, Montauk still exists, you know, so.
And then it just has a step on how to address it appropriately?
Absolutely, what they do is they get an archaeologist and a representative from the nation, they deal with it. It's a well-settled process. It deals with, you know, homeowners' concerns. And, you know, as I said, a determination is made, whether it's a single grave or multiple graves, and what to do, what to handle in the process is pretty, you know, concise. And it's handled, and it's not like an unreasonable delay of time. And they have a good history of how they handle matters.
It's not respectful, but time-
Which is-
And it respects the time, absolutely. So I would strongly urge you to look at any of that. You can even contact the Florida Department of Historical Archaeology. They can give you the contact information. And you could talk to them directly. I have no problem with having, you make that communication with them, because they understand what's happening, and they have experience with it. And it would be helpful that we know that there are others who in this situation, similarly situated, that would not, that know how these things work and how they work well. And I would suggest that you do that. I would strongly urge you to do that.
It also would be good, I think, to look at East Hampton, how they've approached this, so, I think we have a little homework.
Don't look at Shelter Island, because that doesn't work.
Have you made the presentation to Brookhaven yet? Have you spoken to them?
Uh, not formally, but we've spoken to various people about it.
So, if you want to-
I could check with them.
Why don't you look at the laws that are on the books, John? What are you finding here that-
Well, you guys had referenced like 157, our code 157-10. So, and it's, you know, this is total news to me, so I want to research this and find out what you're, what we've have here as far as the law goes. But there are definitely references to the Chinatown Indian Contact Period Village that have specific laid out in this law in certain areas. But whether it's total specific, that one thing it does reference is the town Southampton Cemetery study. That's what I'd need to look into. So there may be code in here, but I, you know, I think it's something that needs a broader look.
And it said, the fear is that graves are being encountered when homes are being excavated?
Oh, we know that. We absolutely know that.
And no one's being notified?
No one's being notified.
Not even the ME?
Not even the ME.
Yeah, so, how do we-
And because New York is one of four states that doesn't have any protections on that, it's done with impunity.
But wouldn't that be unlawful to begin with? Because, I mean, wouldn't you have to report it to the ME now?
Yeah, absolutely.
For human remains.
So I, I mean, maybe we also have to, we have to enforce that somehow, make those home builders, foundation builders aware that, I don't know what type of crime it is, whether it's felony or-
Isn't it just common sense if you dig up bodies-
Public health law, I'm sure.
-or somebody's gross destruction of a corpse, is this?
Yeah, it is, probably all kinds of-
You've done, there's a lot of good, really good reasons.
I actually have the Florida statute.
Do you?
Absolutely.
I'm happy for this and this for you.
So, you know, I, just hold on, you may, just let me just finish one thought. So, again, I remember in East Hampton, before you would get a permit, a permit to dig that foundation, if you were in proximity to one of these sites on this map, somebody had to go, whether it's a planner or archaeologist, anthropologist, go and walk that site. They would do like a field reconnaissance. Maybe they would be looking for that stone oval or that elevated mound, or certain signs that might indicate that there was a burial there. They had an internal process in place. I know, because I helped put it in place.
So it is a law?
Yes, it's a law.
It is a law?
Yes.
Local law.
And I agree that each town, village, they could establish an internal process. But the process has to mandate certain behavior. And mandate has to include a consequence for not following it. Just like you have for other things. We pull your permit, or we, you know, your right to build is in jeopardy or delayed. If you don't follow, or there's severe penalties. We don't want monetary penalties, that's not a point.
So I think, yeah, the first step for us, and we'll look at the-
The point is to prevent continued desecration.
Sure.
That's what we would be looking to do.
So I think, so if we had this early trigger, right, that we're kind of seeing the surface and saying, "Oh, this might be a site based on other burials in the area," whatever it is, it gets triggered off that-
Right.
Somebody from the planning department does a site inspection, sees if there's any additional red flags, and then determines whether you need to do a ground penetrating radar or something like radar, something like that would help. I think if we have our assistant planning director reach out to East Hampton to see what they're doing, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel. And if, Jim, you could review the Florida law-
Sure.
I think that would be a good start. And I'll see what happens to that bill at the county, because my recollection is we passed it, but it was a long time ago. Possibly, we didn't.
No.
So, I remember, we did set up a Bureau of Indian Affairs or something. There was a committee that got set up. But I don't know if they, was a very active committee. So, all right, ma'am, you wanted to speak to?
Yeah.
All right, so we'll-
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, my name is Jennifer Cuffy-Wilson. I'm Chinatown Montauk, and I'm a member of Chinatown Nation. Everything that we've talked about today, we have been talking about this since 2003 or more.
2003?
Okay, all right. So everything that you've heard, we have gone through four supervisors, okay? And it seems like each time there's a new supervisor, this gets pushed under the rug, okay? Every single thing, all right? So we're frustrated, okay? Because we keep coming here and we keep talking about the same thing. You keep giving us the same answers. And all we're asking for you to do is to pass something. Something. And you keep talking about East Hampton, well, great, whatever, East Hampton, fine, let's do it here. But at least pass something, and stop keep pushing it under the rug. Stop keep saying, "Well, we got to look at this, we got to look at that." You've had it since 2003. What more do we have to do?
Okay.
In order to get something done?
This is the first time-
Okay, I understand, this is the first time. But do you understand that this is our fourth supervisor?
I understand.
How come you didn't know this? Before, when you first came here?
The tribal council has changed too, at Chinatown.
This has nothing to do with the tribal council. This is absolutely nothing to do with tribal council. This is us, this is the inter-tribal, this is us. This has nothing to do with the tribal council. So do not use that, do not put that in with us, okay? That's the reason why we don't want to deal with it.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
That's why we're keeping this separate. But please, understand that we have been going through this since 2003. And to be quite honest with you, we have been going through this for 380 years.
Sure.
Okay? And we have been good neighbors to you. Very good neighbors to you. And I heard something, when we were doing our demonstration, I heard a white man say to me that his fear, okay, was that, you know, what, I mean, what more can we do for you, okay? And my cousin said that that's not a fear, and I agree with that. That's not a fear. The fear is, you're afraid that what you have done to us, that we're gonna turn around and do it to you. And that's, that's not a, that's your fear. But guess what? If we really wanted to do that, we would've did it 380 years ago. But we haven't done it. We have been good neighbors. Good neighbors, okay? And everything that you have done to us over 380 years, we have just said, okay. We believe that the goodness will come out. Well, it hasn't come out yet, and it's still not coming out, okay? So, we're asking you, I'm asking you, I'm pleading to you, to please put something so our ancestors that are being dug up can at least be repatriated in the right way, because that's what we're here for.
Thank you.
Muskano.
Thank you.
May I...
Sure, of course, Denise.
In our language, our ancient language, that means hello.
Akway.
Thank you. My name is Denise Silva.
Dennis.
My native name is Widemo Silva Arrow, and I am from the Chinacock Indian Reservation and the Hassanamisco Reservation. I was taught by both sides of my family how to be, have pride in my Native American-ness, to always instill and remember who I am and where I come from. And one of the things, before I even get into that, you asked Becky earlier, well, who does she represent? We have to represent ourselves, because for over 200 years, the Chinacock women did not have a voice. If you look at your old records, it will say that the three men were made into trustees, trustees of Southampton. And along with that, also, three men from the Chinacock Indian Reservation were made into trustees. And the role of them was to take care of the land. But before that, there was a woman named Quashawam. And if you take the time to do some historical information, if you meet with us as human beings, not with a title, as human beings, so that we can tell your history. I taught in the Southampton School District. I guess you remembered my face but couldn't quite place me, Jay. You mistook me from Becky, who you've known for all these 20 odd years, because she is my relation. Everybody here is my relation. You are my relation. And as Jennifer was saying, that is the part of being good neighbors in Southampton, to work things out together. You even have our seal up there, our Chinacock Nation seal. I worked on curriculum with the school district that was supposed to roll out in September for K through, 4th grade only. And then we haven't heard anything yet. I just went to a meeting last night at the Southampton Public Schools District, and what we were fighting for was our, not fighting for, just standing up. We're not even here to fight. We're here to just bring information, to educate. I'm a lifelong educator. And, I mean, I didn't even plan to be here. It's just circumstances from the United States opened, and all the pressures that everybody, our whole town, has gone through. And my daughter is a lawyer. She came to the aid of Becky, and also bringing to the forefront that Chinacock Hills is our burial grounds. And it just so happens that the Chinacock Hills Golf Course is right on burial grounds, and bodies were removed from there. And Becky has all the information. She has the dates with the different supervisors, with the different councilmen. I read not that long ago, right here in our village, that some new owners, new homeowners, put in a fence along the colonial cemetery right over there, and it was an uproar. And you did something about it. You didn't say, oh, we don't know what to do. Where's the statute? Where's the law? We have to consult with our, you know, our people in the data department, or you find, Becky, you find the law. Or Harry, you find the law and bring it to us. Or the trustees on the reservation, they're not even trustees, and we have a council of trustees. And the councils, the council of trustees have an agenda of their own. There's so many things, like Becky said, there's so many problems that we have. I know you had the opiate task force going on. That's because there's a disconnect with our people. There's a disconnect to the land that our ancestors once subsisted on and said prayers to. We haven't stopped. You know, in all the history books, it says, the Chinacock people, they died. They don't exist. The Montauk people, they died. They don't exist. It's all in the history. That's what I was hoping that we would start talking to, from the middle school into the high school. This is a fact. This is what happened to us. Are we gonna repeat history where graves are desecrated? You know, the only way sometimes is to learn, is if something happens to yourself. So, we'd been getting up at 4:00 in the morning, because that was the only time that we were allowed to state our history. And I'm sure a lot of you, and a lot of the workers in here past me, say, oh, that's the same person that I saw on Montauk Highway. These are the same people. What are they doing here now? And all we're doing is trying to educate everyone, because it certainly, we never, I am a product of the Southampton Elementary School. I started out there in kindergarten. I graduated high school. And here and there, some teachers did say a little bit about Chinacock history, but not really. We had a chance to go and learn more, and that just, you know, isn't rolling out. If you, if everybody tunes into the Board of Education meeting, they were talking about, oh, we have a fabulous new social studies curriculum. Fabulous, fabulous, wonderful, wonderful, all that great energy that's gonna be there. And I waited, and I waited. I was the last one to speak. And I said, well, that's so awesome. I said, I'm glad that you're excited about the new social studies curriculum, because, you know, they've said, that's gonna, that's gonna close the achievement gap, because we have a really bad problem where people from Chinacock, other brown-skinned people, people, I don't even wanna say immigrants, I wanna say undocumented people, and their children who go to the school district, who don't feel the connected, connection to Southampton. They don't feel like they're a part of it. We have non-brown people who are dying from the opiate. Why do you think they're dying from the opiate problem? They don't feel a connection to. They haven't been taught what happened to any of us. It's a really uncomfortable talk, I'm quite sure. And I know we had to wait an hour because overtime from our scheduled appointment. And you keep looking at the clock, Jay. But we have some truths to tell, and we might not get it again for another, let's see, you had to wait how many years before you could come here, Becky? 15 years? Before it's back on the table, pretty much?
Back and forth over the last 15 years and gotten faced with nowhere.
One of the other comments that I wanted to talk about, Jay, was when you said, oh, you know, to prove, you know, if, you know, what are these graves? Are they a colonial person, or are they a Native American person? Well, I just so happened to receive in the mail, the Suffolk County Archaeological Association, Volume 44, Number 2, ISSN 1079, 2198, Spring 2018. The SCAA Director, Dr. Gaynell Stone, receives an award. The Order of the Colonial Lords of Manners in America, at their annual meeting on May 31st, 2018, held the Colonial Dames of America House in New York City, awarded President Lightman Coleman III the Timothy Field Beard Award for Excellence in Historical Research on Colonial North American Manners to Dr. Gaynell, Ph.D., Stone, in recognition of her groundbreaking film series on Long Island 17th Century Manners. And then it goes into a history of Long Island by Gaynell Stone. She starts out talking about large number of steatite, soapstone, talc pots, and the Long Island Chapter founders dug out of Orient burial cultural sites. The first time Native American people could cook liquids directly over the fires. And then it's a narrative that goes on. I'll skip down, and I'll submit a copy of this, if you haven't already gotten it. Since a state law had been passed in 1904 forbidding excavation of Native cemeteries outside reservations and remaining perpetrators to the State Supreme Courts, these excavations were illegal, though it seemed no one was apprehended at the time. Mark Tweedy's master thesis noted above, examining the sources of the different rocks that they found, reveals that there was a wider number of sources than known before. Lightman and others also excavated the Smith and Other excavation sites on Shelter Island, as Chief Harry Wallace said, don't go there to look for any answers. Then it goes on and on. And they talk about places in Orient. They talk about our other Native Americans around on Shelter Island. And it talks about the collections at the Southhold Indian Museum, all the beautiful arrowheads on display. And it talks about how they're making, digitalizing their extensive holdings of notes, maps, archaeological data will be known for the future. We are the future, I must add. You are the future. Then it goes on and on, and then I'm surprised, because it talks about Garvey's Point, it starts going to the Hempstead area. And then I see, in this printout, it says Spooner. Now, Spooner was our principal, not principal, he was our principal in the high school. Yeah, the principal in the high school. Yeah, three of us went to that Southampton High School in attendance. I never knew, all those years that he was a principal, that he was involved, he is called an avocational archaeologist. Spooner lists many men who were digging sites before World War II. Waldemar Peterson of Floral Park, Mr. Westerville of Douglason, Matt Schreier of College Point, Mr. Nichols of Huntington, and Walter Vosberg, World War II. Charles Wade of Huntington, Albert Harn of Northport. It just goes on and on, all these people who were digging. Other early archaeologists were Richard Spooner, who recorded the Crab Meadow Site in East Northport before it was demolished by sand mining, as well as Edward Patterson earlier noted. And then they're talking about a Metinnicock tribe, the Metinnicock tribe. There's still people who are from Metinnicock. That's probably something also that you'll learn today. These early reports contain no strategic control, and none of the details and correlations later scientific, archaeological provide, but they are a record of the site's existence. Threatened by the ever-increasing development, which is noted in many of the archaeological reports, unending construction was a major revealer of evidence on Long Island, as well as sand mining, especially in Nassau County. Let's see, there's a part about, right here, where we're from, right who we represent. Because I don't think you really have to have an official, official title to speak your truth. And as I was saying before about us having the tribal trustees that were instituted by the Southampton colonists in the first place to reflect their trustee structure, it was the women. This is another education. And Julie, I also know some of your family, Maura. Maura. Maura was a very good friend of mine, and I remember the twins and the kids. So, I just wanted to make that connection. And Tommy John, I just want to take a moment to talk about hope and the work that we've been doing with the art. We're trying to get, that's a whole nother thing. We're trying to get some kind of art community going again. But here's what Mark Harrington, this is what they say about Mark Harrington. He conducted a survey and excavation in 1900 of what is now the Chinacock Reservation and adjacent area, now Chinacock Golf Club. Harrington, ancient village site of the Chinacock, American Museum of Natural History, anthropological papers, then you can check. It's Volume 22, PT 5, 1924, reprinted in stone, edition, early papers in Long Island, archaeological, 1977, Volume 1, 30-65. So, this will help you find what we're talking about. As well as carrying out testing, which showed a series of habitational spots around Ram's Head Creek, Waterway, and huge depths of shellfish refuse, which indicated a major substance source. He conducted ethnological interviews with the people, which indicated major family groups. One woman, of whom still spoke some of the language. Harrington also excavated exploration of ancient burial ground and village site near Port Washington on Long Island. That's all at the Museum of History at the Hay Foundation. This revealed a huge number of burials, and their depths, and grave goods, because the way you know that it's a Native American burial, it's going to have certain things in it. And if you visit our museum, I'm sure that Mr. David Martin can educate you on what will be found, is ochre that's found. And in order for our people to feel like they are safe going into the next world, that's our ancient religion, certain things were buried with them. Certain pots were buried with them. Arrowheads were buried with them. And it's all documented right down the road on Montauk Highway. So, please get an education more as what we're bringing forward today. There was also another thing in here about Indian Island, and at least you will work together to go and rebury, and that's when Princess Chee Chee, Cousin Chee Chee, was still alive. So, maybe call up past supervisors. Maybe call up people who, you know, worked with us before. And also, I recommend that you call, give a call out to Dr. Gaynell Stone, who has all this documentation of exactly where our people are buried. They know. She knows. And also, one of the things she told me, she actually authorized a display in Riverhead. I have two children. One, one child is a lawyer, who actually went to school to protect us legally, to come down here and speak our truth, to show you facts. But for whatever reason, she's, she can't even work for the tribe. You were talking about, you know, connections with the tribe, and it just has to be government to government. But this is beyond government to government. And my niece also, Tila Troj, Esquire, works on this project, special training. One went to University of New Mexico, the other went to Michigan State, just to come back and help us. You're looking for the opiate solution? This is one solution from our Native American people, that our kids learned, yeah, this was done. But are we gonna keep doing this? Just taking our bones for the profit? I just presented the other night to the Board of Education. It was on Facebook Live, actually. So, I don't know how many thousands of people thought about it, or looked at it. But I ended what I had to say by saying, what is your legacy going to be? Is your legacy going to be that, well, we worked on the bring-your-own-bag? I'm sorry that Ms. Christine Scolera, Councilwoman, is in attendance, because I worked on that project with her as an art teacher, to stop the plastic uses on Long Island. Look what she did under her leadership. She made a difference, because she didn't put it under the rug. She went to all the schools. I got a copy of it.
She didn't...
Yeah, she made a big difference. She was the one with a grassroots group from Southampton, who said enough plastic in our beautiful ocean that we all share. None of us want plastic in the ocean. We can come to a common ground. Do you have to be, do I, did I have to be, you know, a tribal trustee to say it? You know, to enter into the contest? No. I was just an art teacher right next door at the elementary school. My group didn't win, but they were honored. But actually, Debbie, Debbie, one of my colleagues, her group won. And it was just a little, simple, little design, bring your own bag. Now that's rolled out, it first rolled out, what is now Stop &amp; Shop. Everybody goes into Stop &amp; Shop to, you know, shop, and, oh my gosh, I left my bag out in my car. You know, I gotta run back and get it. It worked. It worked because people are passionate. Now it's spreading all over Suffolk County. You can't even go to Riverhead and get a plastic bag. What is your legacy going to be, Southampton Town? Please tell us. Please show us. And don't wait for, oh, I have to speak to that official. Work with this woman here. Work with this woman here, Rebecca Valdez, and everybody who's been supporting her all these, how many years? Forever. Forever. And we didn't get, we didn't just come together, you know, for no reason. We, the woman who raised us, who was part of our teaching, you know, we call her like an auntie, that was Princess Noah Donna. That was our tribal historian. And she said to us, she was a tribal historian, she was a teacher. Now my daughter has gone before other cameras and said, she is my hero. She's been long gone since 1978. And she told us, and we remember, go back and get the Shenikok Hills. What will that mean today? We don't know. But if we ignore people who have been buried and are being desecrated, that's a pretty sad legacy to uphold. Akuwé, thank you.
Thank you all for bringing this to our attention. What we're going to do, I think, Jim, we're gonna take a look at what Southampton has on the books in this issue.
I was informed by, Kathleen said that there was a Home Rule message supporting a state legislation, but it actually did not pass, the Home Rule message, a few years back.
The Home Rule did not pass.
Right, and the state legislation also died, so I'll just take a look at both of them.
And then, you got a copy of the Florida law?
I know, I'm gonna make copies of all this right now.
I'd like to see if we can get Janice from our planning department to take a look at what East Hampton does? And see if that's something that we should replicate. And I will look into what happened to the county law. And I think, I think that's about it. There might be some other state laws, Jim, in terms of grave protection.
Well, can we make a date, or on next?
Yeah, we'll try to set up a meeting. I'll have to work with Jackie in my office and scheduling some, a follow-up. All right? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Supervisor? By the way, I know Gaynell quite well.
Oh, good, so that's wonderful.
You might wanna mention me to her.
I sure will.
All right. And you'll know, have a little of my past history on Native American affairs, okay?
Because we all work together, what a beautiful community. We could really, really have if we just listened to each other. It's just, it's fantastic.
Okay. Thank you. All right. All right, I think that's the end of the time of judgment?
No, I have a post your judging contest.
Oh, you do, at what time?
At 2:00.
At 2:00, where is that? Here?
Downstairs, yeah.
Downstairs, okay, so.
But if we're finishing, I will.
Let's, we're gonna go into executive session, so we could take a, whatever, what do you need, 10 minutes for the post?
Yeah.
Okay, so why don't we do this? We have a number of items on executive session. They deal with litigation, they deal with acquisitions, they deal with confidential legal advice and personnel. So I will make a motion to end our work session and go into executive session on those items. Seconded by Councilman Bouvier Hall.
Aye.